Good afternoon, everyone. The meeting will now come to order. Hello, I'm Donna Savigny, President of the Board of Education, and I would like to welcome you to the September 30th, 2020 Board Updates Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.carolkt12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. This will be a hybrid meeting in which some board meetings are present in the boardroom. However, some board members and staff will be participating virtually. The Board of Education will take public comment related to tonight's agenda items through email or US mail. We will not be holding in-person citizen participation for this meeting. Comments received will be posted on the website. For board members and staff who are participating in the virtual meeting, I would remind us all to silence our cellphones and other devices around us that the microphones may pick up. Also, we should each silence our microphones when we are not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, board members, I need a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey and seconded by Ms. Bataglia. Board members, any comments or changes? No? Okay, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, we'll move right into the Reports and Discussion section. And the first item up is the Health Department Updates, the Metrics and Leading Indicators. So, Dr. Locker, do you want to kick us off for that?
Thanks. Maggie Coontz is with us from the Health Department this evening. Thank you for joining us, Maggie, as Mr. Singer couldn't be here. And this is typically when we sort of go over those metrics and leading indicators and the updates from the Health Department. I know you have the traditional slide deck here that we typically go through. And so, I know that we have that, and I'd ask that we turn it to you and have you walk us through that for this evening.
Okay, great. I think Bob has the slides. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So, I think Bob has the slides, hopefully. Here they come. So, yeah, thank you all for helping me give Ed the night off. He and I work together on these slides most weeks, so I'm pretty familiar with them. And I also do watch these meetings. I know how hard you all work. So, if we can just go ahead to the next slide, it'll be very familiar to you. So, I tried to make them a little bit bigger this week, so hopefully folks at home can read them a little bit better. This is our typical chart that we've been looking at every week. And as you can see, the metrics are trending in a good direction. So, we've gone from red to yellow on the top there with our community cases. I do want to note, though, for folks who are very cognizant of numbers, as it says at the top, this data is preliminary. And already, that number has changed from 43 to 44. We do sometimes get data in that has been received by the State Health Department but was maybe incorrectly assigned to another jurisdiction or something like that. And so, sometimes there are additional cases added to previous weeks. And so, for now, that number is 44. But that, of course, happened right after I sent these slides. So, and it doesn't change the color. But just so you know, that number may change on our website. Just looking down the rest of the table, you see we're still in green with the Governor's metric. The positivity rate is still quite low in Carroll County. It's sneaking up a little bit, I think, in Maryland. But you'll see it's actually about the same in the seven-day average for JHU. So, that's positive, and we're still staying in the yellow there. And then our ICU bed use at Carroll Hospital is still pretty low. We'll see a graph about that in a minute. And then, we still have not had any community deaths for the last several weeks. We've had a few facility deaths, folks who were sick previously. And you'll see that on another slide as well.
Maggie, I did have a quick comment. By the way, thank you for being here tonight. I had a quick question about the total cases per day for the Governor's metric. I know that it doesn't necessarily matter at this point because the last two weeks have been green, and that's for that second line where we're at 4.7 and 3.6. But the fact that we have the 7.5 and the 6.3 in the preceding two weeks coded as red, I think that's a disjoint in thinking, right? Because if you look at the state metrics, it says that you're going to have some in-person learning in small groups possible at 15, and then hybrid kind of in the middle, and then expanded in-person learning is five or less. So, I mean, I would kind of interpret that to be that the state would say that we could open up hybrid at 10, like somewhere between 5 and 15, more like 10, right? Like, the 5 metric is to open up full or expanded in-person learning. So, I don't really think that the 7.5 and the 6.3 should be... They might be red in the context of a full reopening, but they're not red in the context of a hybrid reopening. Does that... Board members, do you agree with that?
Are you saying then they should be maybe yellow, or you're saying they're green?
I think for a hybrid reopening, they'd be green.
Okay.
For an expanded in-person learning or a full reopening, they would be red.
Yes.
But at this point, it's semantics because we've already gotten down below those points. But I just kind of, from a visual perspective, I think that kind of portrays it a little bit worse than it actually is.
Okay, we can take a closer look at that. The ranges for the yellow and the red are pretty narrow. So, we can definitely take a closer look at that and see if that's something that we should adjust. Because I don't think we were thinking necessarily when we first created this chart, the hybrid, we weren't thinking about those in terms of these metrics so directly. So, I think we could look at that and see if there's a... We want to make those bands a little bit wider.
Okay. And I think that that helps when we start talking about the conversation of, okay, when do we move from hybrid to full, right?
Sure, we can definitely take a look at that and see if we want to make a change in that for next week's chart. So, the next slide, does anybody have any questions on this slide? We can always come back. But you may be interested, the next slide reflects those CDC metrics that we talked about last week. We did decide to make a chart to make it a little bit more kind of easy to absorb visually. I did my best, had a little trouble lining things up, as you can tell. But this kind of shows you how different the bands are in the CDC guidance. The orange band, that's the higher risk of transmission, is a really large number. So, we haven't gotten anywhere close to the red, the highest risk ever. You know, and this is showing about eight weeks back, but we haven't ever gotten, I think, that high. But this is a 14-day, that if you remember, it's the 14 days kind of added together and then per 100,000 people in the county. And so, these are our numbers for the last about eight weeks in those two-week increments. And you can see we sort of dipped our toes in that yellow moderate risk of transmission, but we're pretty solidly in the orange for the rest of the time. But we are, as you can see, trending down again towards the yellow. So, that's good news. So, hopefully, this gives folks a little bit more of a visual kind of idea of where we are in terms of those CDC metrics, which are slightly different than ours, you know, but have a little bit more corresponding guidance in terms of mitigation and strategy. So, does anybody have any questions about this graph, which is obviously new?
I think I like the way this is laid out just because it does show you how broad those other categories are, right? How the blue and the green bands are very slim, and then...
Very slim.
Right.
Right, so it definitely shows you that we're moving back in the right direction towards that moderate risk, which Ed was more comfortable, you know, with the hybrid opening happening than moderate risk. So, hopefully, we'll continue to see that go down. Okay, if anybody has any other questions, we can move on to the next graphs, which are much simpler. Here's our community cases again. You can see this is also trending downward. And as I mentioned, there are now 44 cases, but still trending downward on our cases reported per week in the community. This, again, doesn't include our facility cases, but we've had very few of those for the last several weeks.
How many do we have this week so far?
Facility cases?
No, community cases.
Oh, community cases, that's an excellent question. Actually, I should know that off the tip of my tongue. I think we're in the 20s. If I could actually, while we're talking, I can look that up. We had kind of a hectic afternoon here, so let me take a quick look. Always, it's a lot of math for my brain. So, I will look that up. If we want to go to the next slide, I can look that up while we're chatting.
Can I ask a question before we move to the next slide?
Sure.
Go back with the CDC recommendation is, it's higher than what the 35 per week is. I guess I'm asking this question to the board members. What are we looking at before we go back to hybrid? Are we looking at 35 cases or less per week? Or are we looking at the CDC recommendation, which I think would be around 42 cases per week? What are we looking at? Because if we're looking at 35, I don't know why we're even showing CDC. If we're looking at CDC, then why do we lower the bar?
Well, I think when we laid out our metrics, that was before anything had come out at the state level, right? Like, so we basically said, with lack of any state guidance, we were taking our approach. We voted on some metrics. And we said at the end of that was, if any state or federal guidance came out, that we would also track that and look at the bigger picture. And so, I think that what we're doing is trying to keep our eye... Now that that guidance has come out, we're factoring that into the equation and the fact that we are fitting within the state guidelines.
So, we're just tracking this, or are we lowering the bar to make it easier, I guess, to get back to hybrid? Because the 35, when we first discussed this, 35 is actually higher per week if you look at the weekly total per 100,000 people and so forth. 35 is actually higher than what the countries that have opened up schools that have had no problems. 35 is actually higher than what they went back at. So, why, I mean, we went along with that with Mr. Singer. That was his recommendation. He knows a lot more about it than I do. But now it looks like we're trying to lower the bar again to make it easier to get back to hybrid.
No, I don't...
Is that what we're doing here, or are we still sticking with our 35? Because if you're looking at the countries that have opened schools up and have had no problem, they are two or less cases per day per 100,000. That's lower than 35 for us.
And I'd like to dispute that. All of York County has higher numbers than ours, and they've been open with very much success since all of this.
Of what? I couldn't hear you, Mr. Kyler, of what?
York County across the line from us has higher numbers than ours.
I'm talking about countries. I'm talking about school systems that have been open for months. They are two cases or less per 100,000 per day. That's what I'm talking about.
Okay, well, I'm talking about our neighboring county that has higher numbers than us and very much success. My opinion, and I'm not sure if you agree with or want to speak for Mr. Singer, but I think part of his forming this dashboard, the night we discussed 35, the next day, the governor changed everything, and the Health Department, and the State Board. And then, Mr. Singer and the Health Department here developed this weekly dashboard. And I think we talked, we weren't going by any exact individual number, but if you look at the weekly dashboard, and it's mostly green or maybe some yellow, that I think Mr. Singer said, I'm okay with you guys moving forward, and then after that, we'll deal with cases. Like I say, again, my opinion, the state of Maryland changed the 35 the day after we did it.
Mr. Singer also said, to add to that, that he was not... I'm looking at my notes from that meeting. He's comfortable with in-person learning resuming when we're at a moderate risk of transition, according to the CDC chart, but doesn't think it's wise to reopen when rates are at a higher risk of transmission. And we currently still sit in the orange or higher risk of transmission on that CDC slide. I think what Ed was saying was, back to that CDC slide in the yellow, meaning moderate risk, he could live with or be behind recommending the hybrid. The other thing with the Governor's metrics is that there's a range on there, right? From less than 5 per 100,000 to less than 15, and there's a range of things in there. It doesn't specifically state, you could assume if you're less than 15, you can do limited in-person programs, which we're already doing. And then it also has under that category, hybrid or partially in-person programs. That's sort of somewhere between 15 and 5, less than 15 and 5. And then, all the way down on the left-hand side is expanded in-person programs. The most we can expand to, given the current requirements of us with social distancing, is the hybrid model that we have proposed. We can't get any more kids into our school. So, I do feel like there's a lot of room for interpretation in the state's model. I don't know that that's helpful to us or not. But back to the CDC one, I'm not comfortable where we are in the higher risk of transmission in schools at this point. It is trending in the right direction, you're right, but I'd like to see it in the moderate risk.
And the slides that the Health Department had last time, and I like these better. I think, I love that last chart. But it also had a box in it about the social distancing. And I know Mr. Singer played up on that, that the numbers, how you were going to handle everything in the school was as important as individual numbers. I just, I personally don't want to see us get into where, well, this says 5, and it's 5.1, so obviously, we can't move forward. I don't think any of these numbers are that hard and fast, personally.
And for us too, here in Carroll County, like, we've never, like, I'm looking at the chart, the most we've had in community cases was 109. So, we've always been, per the CDC chart that we got last week, we've always been in that higher-risk transmission in schools orange category. But we're now sitting on this, like, we're teetering going into the moderate. So, we're not necessarily, like, we're going in the right direction. We're going in the yellow, where we need to do for the CDC. And that's one thing we've always done, is we follow the CDC recommendation many months ago.
I guess my question is, is that are we going to... Because we had talked about, or you had talked about, I'm listening, had talked about going for two weeks at 35 or less before the students went back for hybrid learning. That was what I heard. Are we staying with that? Or are we now changing? Because I've been asked this many times, what is Carroll County going to do? And I don't know, I guess it's unclear to me, it's unclear to other people as well. Are we going to try 35 or less cases per week for two weeks before students go back in hybrid? Are we not looking at that metric getting longer? We're just, I don't know how to say, we're just not looking at that? That's why I'm asking the question.
And I don't, obviously, that's not a question for me, but just to get my quick two cents in there. Commissioner Frazier, you're correct in that the 35 cases falls at the very lower end of the yellow zone for the CDC. And as, you know, our job really is to provide the data to you all to make the best decisions that you can. And Mr. Kyler, also, you're correct that the CDC chart does talk a lot about the steps we need to take, and those are very important parts of them. They're just very small types, so I didn't include them today. But you're correct, that's part of the CDC guidance as well. So, you know, we could probably find a way to fit some of that guidance together, but if you're looking around the 35 mark, that is in that moderate zone that I think Ed is comfortable with having, you know, after two weeks in that moderate zone, having schools start, it could give you a little bit more wiggle room, and you could still be in that yellow zone. But I think up to the upper end of that yellow zone is a little far from what we originally intended. So, it's up to you to choose what metric you're most comfortable with or how you want to combine the metrics. So, we're just kind of giving them all to you to consider.
Right, and I think that's where we were, right? We voted on the 35 without any other guidance coming down. And, but we said after that vote that we were going to look, that we were going to true-up to the state or federal guidance, if any came out, that we were going to take that into consideration. And then, when we had the follow-up conversation with Mr. Singer, he said, we had talked about, do we just adopt the state metrics, or do we stay with our own? And at that point, he had recommended that we look at this dashboard approach and look at it holistically. And he said, as long as we started getting down into these ranges of the moderate where CDC was, then he would be comfortable recommending that we reopen. So, the 35 was hard and fast for about a day and a half.
A day, a day, a day. And then the government...
And then the state numbers came down. Now, I mean, I think that that's still our target, but we're trying to look at it more holistically now that additional guidance has been given. And there are other school systems that have opened successfully. We actually have the benefit of looking at those school systems, and they have opened successfully, and they have numbers higher than ours. So, I understand your frustration, Commissioner Frazier. I think that we probably need to be a little bit more specific about that because it's not, folks in the community are getting a little confused. So, but the discussions with Mr. Singer for the last several meetings have been that we're taking this more broad dashboard approach and going with his recommendation.
Right, is everybody in agreement that we should be, at minimum, we should be in the moderate risk, the yellow? That's what I heard Ed say to us last time, was that it wasn't wise when we're... I mean, we're trending towards that, but I think we need to be in there.
Yeah, and just looking at the data one more time, I think we also need to keep in mind that we were in that moderate position at like 23rd August around, and it was in the upper moderate risk. But then, again, as things start to open up a little bit, things start to trend upwards, and we do expect a bubble to form. So, if we do open in that upper moderate zone, then there's as much of a risk that we approach that higher-risk zone once we open schools.
And I think at this... Oh, go ahead.
I feel pretty strongly that we're two and a half weeks away from October 19th. And my recollection of the last meeting is, Mr. Singer said he was comfortable with his dashboard. He's comfortable with the trending down, and we need to get kids back in school. If this looks just like this on October 19th, I think we should open. And I think everything we heard all summer and going into school is that people want to notice. And if we're going to sit here and say, well, it has to be 35, and it's 38 today, so we're not having school, we're doing a disservice to Carroll County. I think we need to get the schools open, the numbers are trending down. Private schools, again, in York County, I use it because it's so close. I mean, I could use Florida, their opening schools and their numbers. They'd love to see these numbers. New York's talking about opening schools, they'd love to see these numbers. I think we've been very, very conservative with the numbers, I'm glad we were. But at this point in time, I don't think it's time to say, you know, that... I think we're ready to open. And I think that's what Mr. Singer, I think, acknowledged last meeting.
Well, it looks like...
So, what you're saying, what I think you're saying is that you're okay if we're in orange to open schools? Is that what we're saying? I'm just trying to get some clarity because people are asking this question. Are we trying to get to the yellow, or are we okay opening in orange?
My humble opinion to the public in Carroll County, we're opening schools October 19th. That's the answer to that question.
Whether we're in orange or not, makes no difference.
If, well, I mean, if it's spiked, but the way it's trending and everything we've talked about, looking at this every week, it's trending the right direction. The numbers are all green and yellow right now. I mean, if we had spikes and, you know, we spiked back to 100 cases, we'd have to talk about it, but...
Okay, but so...
What I'm saying is, the way this data looks tonight, to me, I'm comfortable...
Are you okay with opening in orange, is all I'm asking? Yes, you are, Mr. Kyler, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying I'm comfortable with the way the data looks tonight to say we're opening schools October 19th.
So, the orange is fine, okay, thank you.
Well, again...
That's my personal opinion.
I'm speaking for Ed here, but I believe he would say that he would be more comfortable if we were in the yellow zone for two weeks. And it's a little bit still up in the air what that yellow zone is, if you're going with the CDC yellow zone or the lower end of the yellow zone, which would be closer to what we had recommended initially. But I think he would prefer to see that moderate risk of transmission in schools zone for two weeks, which we hope, which we have, you know, every reason to believe will happen unless something untoward happens. But I think that's where, you know, we just need to be sure that we're in that zone for the next two weeks. I think that would be Ed's recommendation.
And again, that's what I was going to say as well. It looks like, you know, again, we just have the one week, the week of 9/20, where we're in this moderate zone now. So, let's see what the next week or two, what those numbers look like. But again, I would hope that we would be in that moderate zone. I know at first, we were saying 35, less than 35, 35 or less. But again, you know, if we're looking at sort of expanding it somewhat just to include that moderate area, I think it's where we would want to be. And I think we said we would look at the other metrics. We would look at those sort of as supporting data or information. So, again, the moderate range is, again, where I'm hoping we're aiming for.
How many of the 18 to 29 cases are from McDaniel College, according to this most recent data?
You're talking about the data that we get out today? Not very many. I think they have about 12 cases, but that's been sort of over the last several weeks. So, most are not from McDaniel. Probably a couple of them are.
And I think one of the other things, the other reasons why Mr. Singer had on here, he wanted us to look at ICU bed use and deaths, is that, okay, we're having new cases, but they're not serious cases, right? People are not getting hospitalized. So, that's one of the reasons why we're not stressing the hospital capacity at the moment.
Yes, that was a key indicator.
That was a key indicator.
Absolutely.
Right. Keep in mind that, you know, in many communities across the US, they've seen, when they've seen a spike in the younger ages, they've then seen a subsequent spike in older ages about three or four weeks later. So, you know, if younger adults are out there doing things and catching the virus, maybe not, they don't know that they have it, and then they're passing it on to older, more vulnerable family members, that has, you know, that's something that we may see happen. It is happening in some places. And then, of course, you'll see the hospitalizations go up after that. So, you know, it's definitely not going away, but it's just something we need to continue to watch. And definitely, the numbers have been pretty good for our hospitalization rates.
Were you able to find how many we are so far this week?
Yes, thank you for reminding. Yes, we have 24 so far this week.
And that's through how many days?
That is through, that's Sunday through today. So, about half the week. So, it's still not, it's not really, I wouldn't say it was going up a lot, but it's not really going down a lot either. One thing I noticed, I don't know if we can get the graphs back up, I'm not seeing them right now, but the graph that shows you community cases by week and age, which is that very colorful line graph, does show you that we actually had a larger number of, a percentage of cases under 18 in this last week. There's just something else to keep in mind. I'm not sure what happened to the graphs, but... I can't see them. I don't know if you can see them, I can't see them.
Oh, yeah, we can see them.
Okay, I can't see them, I have a spinning circle, so...
Mine's spinning, it's not working.
So, well, after, just to kind of give you a quick idea, so the community cases, as you noted, are 43 now to 44 for last week. And this current week, there are 24 cases. The rolling average, as you might imagine, is also decreasing, so it has a nice... For Mr. Herbert and everybody who can't see, it has a nice downward trend. The deaths by week that we're also taking a look at have also, you know, slowed considerably. We've just had a couple of facility deaths over the last few weeks. The ICU beds are also, as you mentioned, they are... The ICU beds are also, as you mentioned, they are continually below our threshold, so that's good. And then if you have in front of you that, I can hold it up for anybody who can't see it, the community cases by, by age, I just wanted to bring your attention to the fact that even though that has gone down, there was just a lot, a larger percentage of, of children under 18 diagnosable in the last week. There you go. There we go, thank you. So there, on the, this is last week's data, you can see there's a, you know, significant, significantly larger number of under 18 cases.
Do you see any trends with that, or any, can you predict the future, or, you know, how does that-
I wish!
How does that look? It's just so strange how the different age groups spike, you know?
It is. I think it honestly, and I think in our small community, some of it honestly has to do with events. I think that there are, just if there's an event that a lot of people are, are at, then, or, you know, something, then I think we see that reflected in our numbers, because, you know, they're not huge, huge numbers. So I think that, that may just be a couple clusters of cases in this past week. So it's kind of hard to predict how those, how those will happen. But you can definitely see, over time, obviously, it's been much younger folks, folks who are going to college, kids who got tested to go to college, kids who are out, you know, at events and socializing, but also kids who are working frontline jobs, who, who are, you know, who have to be out and about to earn money, are also, you know, getting sick. So, I wish I could predict the future.
Mr. Singer said he could.
Oh, my goodness, okay, well, next week, you'll have, next week, I'll have that back.
Don't tell him I said that.
So I appreciate your conversation about the metrics. We can definitely look into the issue that Ms. Vigney raised. But I just, I would just say, I'm a little, you know, I'm not sure what I would say exactly, but, but we just put all those out there for your consideration, and I definitely think it's worth the time to think about, about those, those different sets of guidance and what you, what you're most comfortable following. That's, you know, I think regardless of when you open, you're going to have some cases. And, you know, we just have to be prepared to deal with them, we have to, you, you guys are, you know, we're all working together to get the, get things prepared. And, you know, so we'll just, we'll hope that the next couple of weeks look good.
Well, things have been trending in the right direction, they continue to trend in the right direction. They still haven't quite gotten to the, the thresholds that we're looking for. We have two and a half more weeks. Is this something, so, we are going to have another meeting next week. It's not open, we have some closed session issues that we're going to be meeting on next week. Does it make sense to, how could we address this potentially at next week's meeting? Do we?
Well, does the health department mind, even if we don't have a meeting, emailing us this stuff once a week, so we can keep, keep tracking it?
They do every week, whether we have a meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Happy to do that. And, and happy to get any other metrics or information that you, that you'd like to see.
And I think unfortunately, we've all seen this, your side and our side, the governor could come out tomorrow, the next day, and, and make this tighter, or make this looser, and, and we just need to adapt to it when he does.
I, I think as we said, I think, talked about last week, how we were in a good position that we started looking at these numbers early on, that you had the metrics, the metric guidance from Ed early on that you were looking at. And it's just, you know, it's just up to you to decide how to, how to balance those three sets of, of guidance in a way that makes you all comfortable moving forward.
Board members, any more questions for, for Ms. Coons before we kind of launch into additional discussions that surround this topic?
I'm happy to stick around for a bit if you have any additional questions, if things come up in your discussion.
Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you very much, Maggie.
You're welcome.
Dr. Lockard, is, is there, are you concerned about her input on any specific other items in the, in the agenda? Do we want to move something around while she's here, or you're comfortable?
No, not, not necessarily, no.
Okay.
All right, so, why don't we go into then the next item? Because Maggie's input may be, may be helpful on, on some of the issues that we're going to discuss under that section. Okay, so we'll move into the employee leave update, and Dr. Lockard, do you want to?
Sure. So one of the things that we have been talking about over the last few weeks is the impact of employees exercising their right to take leave that's afforded to them, and how that impacts us and the challenges that presents. We do have some data that we want to share, and it's posted with the meeting materials this evening, as well as copies for, for board members here. And so, I'm going to ask first that Ms. Baptist give us a, a broad overview of what that data is, and then I need us to get into some conversation about ways in which we, we need to address and, and consider the impact of employee leave. As you heard me say last time, I'm, I am concerned, because what I don't want to do is create a situation where the, the instructional program is impacted to the degree that we're, we're doing any kind of disservice to our students. I get all of this is sort of a disservice to everybody, right? And I'm stating the obvious there, but I also don't want to knowingly, I want to make sure we put all this out there, so we knowingly have conversation about our ways in which we can try to overcome some of those challenges, and, and what, what we're going to be doing to do that, or attempt to do that, if that's possible. So with that, Ms. Baptist, and then we'll get into conversation.
Good evening, board members, and Dr. Lockard. In regards to the request for leave update, as of September the 29th, we had 336 requests for leave under the provisions of Americans with Disability, Family First Corona Response Act, or Family Medical Leave. Of the 336 requests, 282 are for our educators. The educator breakdown is, we're at the elementary level, there were 130 requests by elementary educators. Middle schools, they had, excuse me, they had 60 requests for educators at that level. And high school had 92 teachers that requested to take one of the types of leave. There were 189 leaves that were requested associated with Americans with Disability Act, and 147 other requests that fell under individuals taking leave under one of the other protected measures. Do you, would you like for me to continue to break down in regards to other staffing groups?
Sure, Cheyenne.
Okay. So for, we also had impacts and requests from other staffing groups, which included our custodial group. And for our custodial group, we had, for, at the high, excuse me, at the high school level, we had zero requests for custodial group, we had nine members at the, from case, which included our support entities, such as our clerical and our instructional assistants. We have food, four food service workers, and we had two administrators and supervisors. At the middle school, there was six requests from our support employees, five from food service workers, and again, two requests from administrators and supervisors. And then at the elementary school level, we had 15 requests from our support staff, including again, our clerical and instructional support, and two from our food service workers. In going into deeper detail in regards to some of our schools, we saw some of the highest level of requests at the elementary level, Robert Moulton in Carrolltown. At the middle school level, Mount Aryan in Sykesville. And at the high school level, it was Manchester Valley and Westminster High. 97% of the 336 requests belong to school-based staff. At this time, and it just as a note for the board, at this time, we are currently in the process of continuing to approve requests based off the documentation that's received. Again, we had requested a deadline for our staff, for the October the 19th opening, for staff to give us the information by today, September the 30th. However, staff do have the ability to continue to apply for this leave at any time their needs arise.
All right, thank you, Ms. Baptist. And I think to help frame this conversation a little bit, Brenda, there's a staffing scenario worksheet in the packet that you should have a copy of, and Mr. O'Neal was going to walk through. So what are some of the, what are the, some of the potential staffing issues this presents? And what we're trying to do about it, to address it? And so we thought we'd start there with, okay, what are some of the problem, potential solutions? And then continue the, the conversation about moving forward. So, John, do you want to take that from there?
Sure, sure. Thank you, Dr. Lockard, and good evening, board members, Commissioner Frazier. I think either Mr. Henderson or Ms. Bowers will, will eventually load a series of scenarios on the, on the screen. And what we wanted to do was sort of talk through some staffing scenarios, or challenges, however you want to view it, that we know we're looking at and trying to plan for and work towards once we move to the hybrid model. And some of these things we've certainly discussed for a long time, as we've been having these meetings with you, even as early as June, at least in passing. But now that we're very close, and now that we have, for this first scenario, it deals directly with the data that Ms. Baptist just presented, we thought it'd be a good time to sort of talk to you about how we're approaching it, the kinds of things we're, we're trying to do, and have the, have Ms. McCabe and her three school directors on call as we go through these to, to kind of fill in, here's, here's what's going to happen in a school, here's, here's what parents can expect, because, you know, we know these things are coming, we're going to do our best, but we also want the community to be as, as aware and as prepared as possible. So, as, as far as the volume of, of requests for ADA accommodation or approved leave, there's numbers that Ms. Baptist just presented, or, which are available on the, on your website. You know, we were anticipating some number, we weren't necessarily anticipating quite that volume. And so we, we tried to begin a series of strategies to, to address that. And so, the first thing is, for a lot of reasons, we believe that for, for the teachers especially, much of this will deal with the teachers. For the teachers making reasonable accommodation requests or seeking approved leaves, we're, we're going to be working to, to try to have those teachers, if they can, still teach virtually. And so the way that would work under the, the hybrid model would be, for those classrooms that those teachers have, the cohort A or the cohort B would still be in person on the day scheduled for them. The teacher would, who would not be physically in the building, would be appearing as a virtual teacher for the classroom, or for the other students who are virtual. And, and we're looking for staffing solutions to try to make sure we have an adult to, to appropriately cover each of those classrooms in those cases. And so, there's a series of strategies listed here that we're looking at, some of which have already started. We're, we're trying to increase sort of our everyday on-call sub-pool, we have advertisements out, and we're processing that. We're trying to, through that process, engage people who've been in our traditional substitute teacher pool, to see if they're interested in those roles. And, and of course, the goal is to onboard these folks and, and have them up and running as quickly as we can. Other things that are possible within a school, although they also come with, come with some additional challenges, and, and those might be the things that, that, that the school directors can, can help talk you through. Principals have the ability to maybe pull on a, on a limited basis, other employees, to have them, have those employees fill the presence in the classroom, for instance, an instructional assistant. But we still need to staff that position for the day, because as we move to the hybrid plan, having everybody in their positions vital, and having, especially for, for this example, instructional assistants as instructional assistants, or somebody filling that role is essential, because those are, are the folks for us who are going to be making the school run throughout the day with, with lunch and recess and other things. And, and so, you know, these are some of the strategies that are, that are underway. Schools, I'm sure, will be taking a team-by-team, or a grade-level-by-grade-level approach as well. And I'll pause there and see if any of the directors would like to add to that.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neal. Good evening, board members. Yes, you know, as we look at this, we know that many of our teachers are, would be willing, you know, to come back and teach virtually, assuming that they have some type of accommodations or leave requests. The challenges that we're finding is that, you know, if a teacher is teaching virtually, we still need all hands on deck at the school level. We still have many duties that will still need to be covered, recess duty, we have, you know, monitoring the hallways, morning duties. And so, if the teacher is virtual, we would still also need someone in their classroom to support the children that are there hybrid. You know, one of the concerns is, though, that if a teacher's teaching virtually, and those students are there in the hybrid setting, that they're still getting some type of virtual learning, because the teacher would be teaching virtually, the lesson would be projected through the teacher on the board, and the individual that's substituted in the classroom would really just be monitoring that class. At the elementary level, we're really concerned with students bringing in laptops, mostly because they could be their family or personal laptops, as well as maybe Carroll County Public Schools issued laptops. But, you know, small children bring them in on the bus or, or driving them. There's more of, you know, ability to have them either broken, damaged, lost, and that's something that we would, you know, do not want to happen. The, the other concern is really, as the teachers are teaching virtually, you know, we would, the person in the classroom may not be certified, or may not be able to answer some of the questions that have, are coming up for those students, you know, in that hybrid setting. You know, as well as just the concern that if we do pull an instructional assistant to work with those students, then we also need to backfill that individual's job as well, because they would also be covering other duties in the classroom and in the school.
Steve, let me ask you a quick question. Let's talk for a minute about if you have a, a handful of students who want to remain all virtual, and one of your fourth grade teachers has an accommodation and can only teach virtually, can you pair the students? Now, I recognize what this means is, you're going to get it, you're going to be assigned to a new teacher. But can we talk through, through that a second, in terms of a, a possibility? And I recognize if, it depends on numbers, and this has been our, our challenge. At the elementary, it's a little more manageable content-wise, because of the certification requirements, gets a little more complex at middle and high school. And I also recognize it just depends on the numbers. Our principals right now are looking, you know, at these numbers. How many teachers on leave? How many kids are going to be virt, all virtual? How many are going to be hybrid? And how, what are my solutions here? I've heard that, that that is one possible solution. What that does mean is changes of teachers.
That would change teachers. We strive for consistency in the classroom, you know, with our students. And any student can then, you know, if they are currently hybrid or virtual, they can switch at any given time, which would, you know, change our numbers within that classroom. So, you know, with, with the consistency, especially at the primary grades, of having the same teacher, we assign our classes based on leveling and the support needed. We try to mirror also those teachers with personalities of students and vice versa. And there are a lot of requests that parents have on certain specific teachers. The, the other concern would be, you know, if the student is receiving some type of special support, or maybe advanced academic support, that may not mirror up with the teacher that, that's teaching virtually. One other challenge may be that if it's a teacher that is virtual, if it's a special areas teacher, meaning a PE, a related arts such as arts or music, those students would receive virtual instruction through the entire school. There would not be a teacher at all to teach them in the, in the hybrid setting.
And I'd like to chime in, at the high school level, we have a lot of singletons. We have oftentimes one instrumental music teacher, one AP calculus teacher, one AP chem teacher, one tech ed teacher conceivably. So if they're virtual, though, we can't match them up, there's, there's one or the other. They're either going to come into the building, if they, they've been granted one of the types of leave, then they're only going to be able to provide virtual instruction, and then obviously, we would hope to find a, a person to be in the classroom, but it wouldn't be their teacher, it would be someone to provide supervision.
Plus, back to the elementary level, I'm questioning how many IAs we have in each school now? Because again, if they're already going to be needed for lunch and recess and a myriad of other jobs that have to be done, how many IAs are we looking at per school?
We have, you know- We have, you know, between four and five IAs per school. Some have a little more, but not many if you're talking about general education IAs. And, you know, they would actually be going into the classrooms to serve as the individual person for lunch duty because we would still need to have social distancing and we're having, you know, many of our classes eat in the classroom. As well as they would also be responsible for supporting recess duty as best as possible based on the schedule of each individual school.
And if you look at the larger schools, I mean, if you sort of think, okay, if you have at least four classes on each grade level, that's 24 classes. And four to five assistants, just even trying to cover the recess and the lunch, I mean, that certainly is a challenge.
Correct. As well as, you know, they usually pull small groups of students, they normally assist with students that may need some type of, you know, just individual support during the day. And so you're correct that we are limited in the staff that then can really help out, especially if we're missing one or two when we don't have all hands on deck.
And Dr. Dorsey, that's why we said that in 100% virtual, our IAs can help us with substituting as needed. But when we go to the hybrid model, our IAs can no longer help us with substituting because we need them to do the supervision duties that we need for lunch and recess. And in many places, we're still scrambling to find people to help us with that supervision. So we certainly are not overstaffed in that area to complete all of the things we have to do in the hybrid model.
And one of the things that I would add at the middle school level is that our teachers are content-specific, they're specialists in what they're teaching. And when I don't have one position at the middle school filled, I'm impacting 100-plus students. So this is probably the greatest challenge that we are facing right now, is making sure that we have quality instruction in front of our students.
So we are trying to work to fill those classrooms or backfill those other employees if we get to a situation where someone else would have to fill in that classroom, even though that's clearly not ideal for the reasons stated. We have Mr. Hartlove as part of this discussion. We're going to, we know we'll be hiring people for this school year that we would have never anticipated. And so we'll try to apply all federal and state dollars that we receive that are eligible for this purpose to this venture. But I think to some of your questions, especially Dr. Dorsey's, will sort of be kind of not overstaffing, but staffing more than we would have ever anticipated with these temporary folks to try to meet these needs. There are some other compliance items that this approach of allowing the people on leave or with reasonable accommodation to still teach, just to teach virtually. It helps us meet MSD or state requirements for having a certified teacher record. It addresses the concern we've had that one of the things the state wasn't willing to relax is how many classes a person can teach out of his or her assignment area because that teacher, even though they're virtual, is still the certified teacher and the teacher determining the grades for those students. So it helps in that way. Another strategy that we have begun discussing that's not listed here specifically, but we wanted to have that conversation is, and it won't be a cure for all, but it's certainly every piece that helps lower that number or meet this challenge is a help. And that would be to allow our employees, our teachers, who are, it's a specific group of employees, this would only apply to Carroll County Public Schools teachers who have taken Family First Coronavirus Response Act leave for the purpose of childcare for their own children. If their children are in our school system and school were open to their children every day of the week, then it would negate presumably the need and the reason for those teachers to need coronavirus, Family First Coronavirus Response Act leave. And then they could possibly be teachers then in person for the hybrid days. And so that's another thing we're looking at. It would only work if, you know, if the teacher has students enrolled in our system and those students are all in our schools. So if there's a younger student, younger child not yet in school, then obviously that's still a childcare need. If the teacher lives outside of Carroll County, then that wouldn't work. If the teacher has a student in a private school, that wouldn't work. But for those teachers who have students in our schools, if we take that approach, it does lower that number of folks on leave to some extent. Ms. Baptist's team is in the process of trying to get a very precise number on how many of those teachers would need leave if that was the case. And so Board members, these are the kind of strategies we're taking to try to meet this challenge.
If I could jump in here, you're looking at right now 336 teachers or staff members in the schools that have put in for some type of leave. When they put in for that leave, I believe they're of the understanding that would be a low risk of transmitting COVID in schools because we're going back at 35 or less. Now we're talking about going back possibly a higher number of cases per 100,000. Don't you think that will impact the number of people that might ask for leave? Because now they'll be more fearful of coming back to school because now it's not a low risk anymore that we're putting them in, we're putting them in a moderate risk. I think that's going to have an effect. I think the numbers you have right now might balloon if, when they find this out.
It may. Commissioner Frazier, other than to speculate, I'm not really sure. You know, people, we've been sending out notices saying the projected date is October 19th. And we've asked people, and that's a point I guess we should make for the public as well. You know, this list is not, these data are not static. These are the numbers as of yesterday, it's changed even today, but this is when we pulled the data together. We sent out notices of our intention of what the board has been discussing, and we asked employees to try to make their requests if they knew they were going to by September 30th. And as you can see, largely, they did, and we appreciate that. But an employee has a right to apply for leave if they qualify or accommodation, if they qualify at whatever point it's appropriate for them. So we know that these data are going to change, they're going to be fluid. I really, I don't have any way for me to say how much it would change given a certain factor or another. But we do know it will change.
I'm not saying you can look into a crystal ball and know what the numbers are. I'm just saying, keep that in the back of your mind. Because now we're talking about going back at a higher number than 35 cases per week. Therefore, people are going to interpret that a little bit differently, and they might think about whether coming back or not is safe for them in their circumstance, where they thought before it would be okay. That's the only thing I'm saying. I don't have any numbers or anything to go with that, but I think it's something that needs to be considered.
Mr. O'Neal, and I was glad you explained about the teachers, the educators with kids that could go to school. Do any of the daycares that are using school facilities have any room or they're all full with waiting lists? Is that an option if they do have a younger child or that's not even possible?
So daycare or learning centers in our schools for anyone, but especially for our employees, as we've been talking about, that's something, Mr. Kyler, that we had some discussion with you last week. We've explored that at length. We spent a lot of hours on that between last meeting and this meeting. And ultimately, we decided that it's probably not feasible, and it's certainly not something we believe we could stand up by October 19th, even if it was feasible. But to specifically answer your question, if you recall the before and after school childcare that we have in many of our elementary schools, which is really a sort of a function of the PTA historically, we've modified those leases, but only during the virtual time periods. So I'm sure that Steve Wernig and Eric and Tom would tell you that once we moved to hybrid, we're going to want and need every space in the building. And so those lease modifications were written by Mr. Omeley, in fact, to say that the minute that CCPS moves to a hybrid model, then those daycares return to before and after school. So there, you know, for that reason and others, we didn't believe that moving to a daycare or a learning center model was feasible. Another major reason was space. A third major reason was somehow we'd have to staff that or contract that. And it's very hard to even plan that without knowing the numbers. We, I don't want to name other systems because I'm not sure where they are with this process publicly or formally. But in, one of the other things we obviously did in the last week was spend a lot of time on the phone or email with our counterparts, asking them, you know, what have you done? What are you doing for the systems that we knew had some sort of a childcare or learning center arrangement for students? And we learned a couple of things. Most of them, in fact, everyone I think we heard back from said that they were only doing that during their virtual time. And once they moved to some, you know, significant form of in-person instruction, that they weren't going to be able to continue those programs due to space or staffing. But that is where we got the idea that, because some of them were considering and may have now already implemented in a formal way or announced in a formal way, the concept that employees with children who are students could bring them in every day of the hybrid model. And it sort of meets that same, it sort of resolves that same problem or challenge under the Family First Coronavirus Act as it would be if we had space and staff or contracts to run learning centers instead. So that's kind of the long story about how we got there between your last meeting and this meeting.
Right. It sounds like that's a more viable option than trying to stand up the daycare options just from a space perspective and a logistics perspective. If the teacher's kids were allowed to come in those extra days, that's effectively accomplishing the same thing, but in a much more viable way.
And I think that it's something that, you know, it's something that's out there for the teachers, you know, all right, is this something I want to do? Am I willing to do that? And I'm glad that we're making that, you know, we're looking into that offer to help cut down that a little bit. You know, once we see how this works, you know, when we open up, the teachers' families going the four days, I would like us to look, you know, a little time after that, you know, if the teacher feels that a student would potentially, could help them to have an extra two days. Or if a parent advocates, like, look, my kid isn't, this isn't good, you know, and my child needs more.
Or are no connectivity kids.
Right. So I mean, and that's the thing, baby steps. Again, if we can do this and then work into something else a couple of weeks later, and then work into something else a couple of weeks later, like just making sure things are working. And I think this is a good step, though, to offer something to the teachers so hopefully that they won't have to take the leave.
And let me ask this, would it also have a trickle-down effect if we went that route and allowed the Carroll County teachers with Carroll County students? If those students could come in four days a week, that eliminates the need for the FF-CRA leave. Does that also open up more space in the daycare centers for the situations where they have infant and toddler-aged kids? Right? Because effectively, a bunch of kids are going to be coming out of those daycare centers to come back into school. So I would think that that would, there would be, you'd get even some pickup of the infant and toddler-aged kids because of creating space in the daycare, in the childcare facilities.
It may in general in the broader county, but it won't for those in our schools because those revert to before and after school only once we move to hybrid. But in the daycare, whatever daycare centers have availability more broadly in the surrounding area that might work for that teacher, then perhaps there's a trickle-down or trickle effect. One other thing to say for this specific thing or some of the broader approaches that Board Member Pataglia was just referencing is, this isn't without some implication. And it doesn't mean it's, you know, obviously, we're sort of promoting this as a partial solution to some of our staffing challenges. But it does mean that schools will have to look closely at class assignments and spacing within classes and that sort of thing. Obviously, if you have a student that you would not have otherwise been planning on having there Thursday and Friday, now they're on Thursday and Friday, that changes the classes a little bit. And of course, Mr. Hardis, he will have to look at what that would mean for buses, for those students, whoever, whatever number that turns out to be that would become part of this, who would now be on a bus on a different cohort day than planned. So, you know, that doesn't mean it's not worth pursuing. Obviously, we're suggesting we pursue it, but I didn't want to not put everything out there that we have to think through and plan for and work through when it happens. So there are some additional considerations on the logistical side of things as well.
As far as numbers for daycares, though, if I understand, and these different leaves, if they're requesting that leave, it's because they don't have their kids in daycare, right? That's why they request this, because they can't find daycare.
It means that there is not, it means one of two things, I think, and Mr. Omeley can fine-tune this if he'd like. It means that their school is not open for their child every day, you know, that we're talking about. Or it means that their normal, I think the federal guidance uses the word "usual," daycare is unavailable. So it doesn't mean that the daycare as a whole necessarily has to be open or closed. It could mean, I think, to President Savigny's point perhaps, that there just wasn't space for, you know, for that additional child. And so what the kinds of things Ms. Baptist and her team would require would be some sort of verification from, you know, from the appropriate whomever to say, there's no availability at my daycare right now. So it's either, if your school's not open, and if that's the case, then you also don't have your usual daycare being available.
And then...
Mr. O'Neal is correct in that respect. And there is a distinction between the usual daycare for the younger kids or the school being closed. And the updated guidance provides that in a hybrid model, your school may be closed if you're an A student on the B day. And that creates the quondary. And that's why we're exploring the possibility of a solution to enable the educators that we need in the school on every day of the hybrid model, that their kids can attend, their school would not be closed on an A day or a B day. For those children, the school would be negating the need for child to leave under Family First Coronavirus Response Act.
And Mr. Omeley, to your knowledge, are there other counties going with this approach or planning to go with this approach?
Yes, there are. And as a matter of fact, there was an article on this in the Baltimore Sun about a week ago regarding several different counties. And that was in the Baltimore metropolitan area. But there are some that are opening for staff so that their children can attend for the reason being that we need the staff to be in the school.
And so where we are with this item, Board members, is we're reporting it to you tonight that it's something we've been thinking about and looking at. Ms. Baptist's folks in Human Resources are reaching back out to the teachers who applied for FF-CRA for the reason of childcare and kind of doing a survey, for lack of a better term, to say, you know, we have your request, it's being processed or been processed. In your situation, do you have, are all of your students, children, students in our school system? And if we allowed your students, your child, to come to school all four days of the hybrid week, wouldn't that negate, you know, that would negate your request for leave? So we want to get a pinpoint on what that number is. What does that reduce, the 280, whatever the number was yesterday afternoon? What does that lower that to? Because then that changes the whole staffing question for all of those other strategies that are underway.
And John, how soon would we expect to have that answer?
We could, now that we know we're having a meeting next week, we could have that answer next week.
Mr. Neal, you mentioned talking to some of the other jurisdictions. In our May meeting on Monday, a few counties, some have already required teachers to be in the classroom while they did virtual. A few said they were requiring throughout the month of October, all teachers to be in the classroom. Are they seeing the similar 15% or so of teachers requesting leave or they haven't gotten that far yet? And then, oh, before I forget it, you can be my witness, and I compliment the rest of our board. I think it was Montgomery County, their last two board meetings have been 11 hours each. So maybe we're not so bad.
Wait, which county was that?
Montgomery. Wasn't it Montgomery? Montgomery, wasn't it Montgomery, Mr. Neal?
Yes, it was, they did say that, and it, it made me very twitchy, I got very nervous when that-
We're not trying to break any records here, right?
You guys are getting off easy.
You know, the answer to your question, Mr. Kyler, is I'm not aware of sort of a formal report where an organization like MNS or the HR folks have pulled something together. I can tell you from conversations and surveys, listserv survey-type things I've seen as an, as a sort of an ex officia member of the HR organizations, some other systems are seeing something comparable. Now, I didn't do the math, but knowing those systems and generally their student population size and the numbers that they were reporting, it, it was, I would say, comparable, you know, I wouldn't nail it to the percentage, but yes. And then, you know, and then highly publicized some of the other systems that sort of announced a, a go date, then kind of moved back on that after they, they received some reaction from their employee base. So I, I don't know that that means every county and every county school system in Maryland is seeing something similar. I just know that some are. And I don't know if Chantris has, you know, more information than I do on that, um, she might be closer to that than me.
You're, you're correct, it depends on the, the county, the objectives and the supports that they're able to provide in regards to what their numbers are like. I, I will tell you that, and whether or not they are, when they are anticipating to go hybrid is a, is a factor. I will tell you that Cecil's numbers, according to their student population and the staff that they have closely mirror our numbers as well.
And Derrick County, Cecil is a county with a similar, we're, we're kind of out in front on a, on a projected hybrid date. So, you know, just to be really clear for, for my sake and what I direct Chantris to do, President Savigny, are we saying you, the approach on that single question you, the board would like is for us to bring back the results of that, of that reach back out to those employees by next Wednesday?
Board members, are we all in consensus that that's something that we want to know and very likely will want to do, depending on the results?
It's a good idea, if it helps our teachers, I think it's great. I think we got to look at it.
I'm seeing all nodding heads, so-
Okay, great.
The answer is yes, Mr. O'Neill.
And, and I had one more question, Dr. Lockard had mentioned pairing up virtual to virtual. And, and Mr. King, you, you talked about at the high school level, having sever, several different areas where you have one teacher. So if, if they're out, you don't have that option. And, and I'd like you to maybe elaborate on that, but at the same time, is it, is that the case at middle and elementary too? Or is there more flexibility at the other two levels?
So yeah, I'll, I'll start with that, Mr. Kyler. When I say singleton, certainly by certification, I most likely only have one instrumental music teacher and one choral teacher, period. Now, for AP, say in AP Calculus, there's only one person in most of the schools teaching that. There could conceivably be two that have the certification, but that would be a luxury that, that most principals wouldn't have. Now, something like AP English, where there are two courses, the Lit and the Lang, there, there are teachers sometimes that'll switch off years, there could be two or three. But losing any of those people is, is a very damaging blow to a school, especially if they are not able or willing to teach virtually. Because then we may not even be able to call the course that the students take AP. Now, we have wonderful other teachers that may help and supervisors and people that could team up to help create lessons. But the years of content knowledge that these teachers have, even in some of the honors classes are not, we can't replicate that with, like, you don't hire a brand-new teacher and have him teach AP, that, that's just not reality. And that's not good administration in a high school. You want to work a teacher up to that and mentor them for several years sometimes before they take over courses like that.
Are there, and, and that being said, are there AP classes? And, and I haven't, I've heard, only heard a few parents talk about virtual AP. But are there AP classes that maybe are suited to continue as virtual classes, even if we open hybrid, just by the nature of the class?
Yeah, if, if I was forced to choose, I would say a class that my own child is in, one of the AP English classes could be conducted in that manner. And I think is being conducted extremely well by many of our teachers as we speak. But then it leads to the question, if that is your second or third mod class, what does that student do on their day that they are expected to come into the building? So the answer to your question is yes. Now, in AP Chemistry and AP Bio, the lab experience is vital to the course, so I would say no. But an English course could be done that way, but then it leads to the question of what is this, why is the student going to sit in the classroom for that mod? And/or how do we manage that when their teacher's only virtual?
And we could have a situation where, you know, one of the four mods a day is there's a virtual teacher while kids are sitting in the class, right? But we certainly wouldn't want it to be any more than one, right?
Yes, President Savigny, I agree with you 100%, and that, that's why, you know, our, our total number of substitutes and replacements that we need is, is stressing us so much. But yes, I agree with you, one mod would be much more palatable to a student and a parent than multiple mods in their day.
I'm sorry.
And Mr. Kyler, just to answer your question, yes, at middle school, I have teachers who, related arts especially, there's only one in the building. They have a specific certification. Their, the real issue with a related arts teacher, as Mr. Warnock alluded to earlier, they're impacting far greater numbers of students because students are rotating through their class from multiple teams, multiple grade levels. So, you know, we, we do have the same issue of certification needs. And certain teachers create a larger gap when their position's not filled than others, so it does translate down.
Similar at the elementary level, we have early childhood certification, we only have one pre-K teacher at most schools. The other issue is teacher record, is that, you know, when we're assigning grades, we have to ensure that there, you know, there is a teacher record that's been teaching that child for some time. And so as we, you know, the student switches back and forth, or consistency, again, as I said, we really look to place students based on, you know, the levels, academic levels. We also have students that are placed based on needs, not being with certain students. So it would really take some, you know, puzzle solving, to try to manipulate student, you know, in a virtual setting with, with certain teachers. The other issue would be if it's a fourth-grade teacher, that's virtual, and that's all I have, I couldn't put a kindergarten student or a first-grade student in that class. It would only have to be a fourth grade, so that the curriculum could be taught to its fidelity.
Right, but it's much more doable, I mean, I think we were always aware of the, the additional complications at the middle and, and especially the high school level. But at the elementary school level, we knew that it was going to be a little bit more straightforward. And, and I think that we had actually requested at one point that, like, why wouldn't we look at doing it differently for elementary? And trying to match up the, the virtual teachers with the virtual kids at the elementary level, because it would be more doable. Now, now, because we didn't pull the trigger on that, that's what's causing a lot of these issues. But Dr. Lockard, to, to your point where you said if we could move some of the kids around, I mean, it is an option. And I, I think if we look at, so you've provided some grids here that say, you know, by, at the school level, what the number of in-person kids are versus virtual, and is there a way to, so it is a big puzzle. But if you look at the detail at the school level, is it one that's solvable? Especially if we're able to do the, the FF-CRA modification, the childcare modification. You know, is this something that, because if you look at, even if you just look at the first one on the list, right, Carrolltown? And if we see, so Carrolltown has 13 teachers that requested leave out of 48. So that's, that's what, 20, a little bit more than 25%?
27.
27% of the teachers that requested leave. But if you look at the students, so it's 379 in-person versus 212. Need to break out my calculator.
And again, you still would have some restrictions even at the elementary level, as far as your early childhood versus-
Yeah, I had at Carrolltown, only 63% of the students elected to be in hybrid.
So 37% want to stay virtual-
30% want to stay in virtual.
But 27% teachers want to stay virtual. So that actually seems like the numbers there would work.
Depends on who the teachers are, I guess.
The issue that I'm seeing, though, is that a lot of those that are on leave or look to take leave are counselors, OT, special ed, advanced academic specialists. They're not so much your classroom teachers. I may only have one or two classroom teachers that are looking to teach or stay virtual based on their ADA or their leave accommodations.
And you have to look at that at the individual school level, right? With all the detail of here, here are all your teachers laid out, here's the ones that are potentially taking leave, here's the number of students that are virtual and in-person in each one of those classrooms, and make a plan at that level, right?
Right, you just can't look at the numbers, you've got to get those numbers with-
Right, and each administrator would need to look specifically at their school and map out the plan. We understand that those numbers are going to be somewhat in flux for a while. But there, there can at least be a construct and a grid that you start figuring out with the best information at the time.
And President Savigny, that's what the administrators will be working on between now and Wednesday. They'll be taking the data and the information that we've received today through Human Resources. And we'll be looking at what the possibilities are for coverage and for any kind of creative strategies that we can come up with.
If I could jump in again, that's okay, I know you're loving it so far. First thing I want to ask, you talked about teachers that have children in the school system, and you're offering them to have his children near four days a week when the school's open, that way they wouldn't have to take the leave because of childcare. But do, would the teachers also have a right to decline that? Because what I'm thinking, now you're exposing their, their child to twice the number of kids, a chance of getting COVID. Additionally, you have that student on A and B day schedule going to the, whatever, the other C and D day schedule as well. If they have the COVID, then they're exposing two different class, classes of it. So it's just, I, I was just wondering if it's worth the risk? And if the teacher has a right to say, no, I don't really want to expose my child to double the chance of getting COVID?
So that-
Let, let me take a stab at that. Unless the child has a disability that would prevent the child from attending, a child's school is not closed. And it's not a discretionary action on the part of the teacher to decline, you know, to send the child to school, that situation. Certainly, the parent had right to decline to send the child to school, but the parent can't use that as a basis for not coming to work. Under the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, the parent only has the right to take the leave if the child's school or usual childcare center is closed. If the child has a disability that requires parent to be with child, that's an entirely different situation that might trigger ADA and FLA.
So, Board members, we had a, a number of scenario, a handful of scenarios here we wanted to talk through. This was the, kind of the big one up front, oh, I see that Mrs. Herbert has her hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that when, when these principals do this, and I definitely want to open, but we still have to be very mindful of their reading levels and their math levels. That's the teacher side of me coming out. And I, I do, I, I want to open up, I do want to open up. And, but we have to be mindful of that because they won't get anything out of it.
Right, that's something Mr. Warnock mentioned, actually, Mrs. Herbert, in his, in his response, where classes are purposely put together to support students instructional levels.
So they just have to be mindful of that, for, for our students to go forward.
And, and you also have several educators on this list that are at multiple schools, some up to, I think, four schools. So that'll have to be evaluated too.
Yes, Eda?
I was going to say, John, if you want to go onto the next scenario, I know we got a few of these here.
Sure, and, and we could certainly come back and forth, and this is a lot to chew. And it's the major upfront, you know, in advance of hybrid item that so many of us on this call and, and others have been stressing and trying to work through. So we understand that it's a lot to take in. We can come back and forth there. There are some other scenarios, though, that we'd like to talk through, and if Bob or Brenda could, could jump ahead. If you think back even to June, when we first started presenting the update meetings and, and the plan, the format of the, of the CCPS reopening plan, there was always this section in there called, called something like variables and contingencies that may affect our ability to implement. And we, and we hinted at things like these examples, and we've talked often on about these examples. But given the proximity to a potential move to hybrid, for your sake, for our sake, for the, for the parents and the public's sake, we thought it'd be a good idea to, to take and, and spell out a few scenarios that we know will present staffing challenges beyond getting over the leave and, and the ADA requests. And just give you a glimpse of the kinds of things that we're, we're aware of out there, we've been trying to think through and plan through and work on. But you can get a sense of, of what some of those specific scenarios might be, and the school directors can talk you through about how, how we'll try to respond at the school and central level. So the first one just builds, the second one just builds on the first one. What do we do when we don't have an employee to cover that classroom for a teacher who is teaching virtually? So this is one of the teachers in the data set from, from just before. And as, as everyone has said, for the, for the students who are in-person on their hybrid cohort day, we're, we're trying to staff that room with some other adult to provide general supervision and some guidance. So what happens when that employee, the person who is, who is filling that room can't be there? And that may be, as you can see here, any number of reasons, they, they're ill that morning, they have symptoms that morning, whatever it is, they're part of the quarantine and exposure protocol that Mr. Streaker and Mr. Singer talked about last time. You know, what, what do we do? And, and I'll let Cindy and her folks talk about what, what we do.
So I think, I think this is a, a good example that, you know, our parents and community certainly need to be made aware of. And that would be that if we do have a situation like that, where the, the teacher is teaching virtually and the person that we are paying to supervise students in the classroom while they learn virtually, if that person is not available or calls out or is in quarantine, then those students will need to go virtual for the period of time that a, that supervision is not available for the classroom. As Mr. O'Neill said, hopefully, we can get that information out to parents the day before or the night before. But there may be some times when we don't find out that the person is unavailable until the morning of school. And so students may arrive at school and we may have to call parents to pick them back up, just depending on the circumstance. Of course, we would be trying to work coverage as best we can. But, you know, this would certainly, even though this is worst-case scenario, it's probably going to happen. So it's certainly fair that, that folks know about that upfront.
And Ms. McCabe, what I would say is this is a scenario where, being in the hybrid model, we have a much greater chance of this occurring. In the traditional model, back when we had everybody in and all students with no limitations, in emergency situations, we were using the IAs, well, now they're, they're performing other duties for us. We were able to use teachers and a lot of those things use available space. Social distancing has limited that. The, the criteria is to keep kids safe have caused us to lose some of those options. So this is a scenario that, that very likely will play out. I mean, when I look at 340 available, we will probably have exhausted the available permanent subs, the available substitutes. So then, when a person gets sick in the morning, it amplifies the problem because all solutions have been exhausted, and that's going to compound the situation. So I just want people to be aware, it's, after all the scheduling, planning, adjusting, and everything that we're doing maximizing staff, this is a scenario that has a very high chance of happening.
If, in, in a scenario where middle school or high school, they're changing classes, and this is one class, or, or even in the elementary, just to look ahead for this, and I think we talked about this one of the prior meetings, is it possible to designate the media center, someplace where they can be social distance, that, that they go for that part of the day to, to do their virtual learning, and then they go back to a class that has a teacher? Is, is that an option? And I know- And I know, Mr., you were saying, I, I think back to the days of flu when we had sometimes 50% absentee rate of students and teachers, but our hands weren't tied with social distancing and all the other rules. So, but is that possible?
The answer is there are, those are all options that we'll look at, but in reality, one of the things that's, that's limiting is we've moved a great deal of furniture out of classrooms, and so we've taken some of the available space to store those because we need places to put it, they're a safe way for children. So, yeah, every option will be explored and utilized. I mean, we want kids to be in school and we want them to be in front of quality instruction. But the reality is that this is a much more limiting situation than any other situation we've ever faced having children in school.
And at the elementary level, to ensure that teachers are able to teach both their hybrid and their virtual students, they are going to now have to remain in their classrooms, you know, on the media specialist, the, the art teacher, because they can't be on a cart moving their technology around and trying to set up as they're going into the classroom. So that we are actually using all available space for students to be able to have all their classes. You take some of our schools that, you know, are, are close to, you know, capacity or, or their classrooms, there's not a lot of available space in the school. It, it's going to make it difficult to have an open area to be able to socially distance classes that may not be able to be used.
And I think for all of these, and please keep asking the questions, but for all of these, you know, the answer is, schools are going to do everything they can first because the goal isn't to send kids home or not have them in. Right now, in, in the full virtual mode, I'm sure that administrators are, are subbing, so to speak, often probably, or occasionally. But once it's more than one, that's, that's only a strategy that's going to help, you know, one class out. So these are just things we, you know, we know will happen. It's unfortunate, it's part of our reality. We hope it's limited, but we're, we're just trying to frame them and make sure we're discussing them with you and the public as we get much closer now. The next one is simpler, at least in terms of a concept. If Brenda or Bob wants to flip ahead, and it's one we, though it's simple, we spend lots of time and hours and thoughts on it, or trying to develop some, some strategies to deal with it. And even from a legal perspective, Mr. O'Malley and I have spent a lot of time talking about this lately. We, we can't have school now without a nurse. And in most of our schools, we have one nurse assigned. And so when we reach those situations where a, a nurse has to be out for whatever, for whatever reason, all of the reasons on the, on the previous slide, up to and including they're in quarantine or they're part of the exposure protocol, we do everything we can to have, to find a nurse. And I don't know if Cindy wanted her, Carl, or whoever to talk about that. But at the end of the day, we, we have to have a nurse to have school.
So yes, we've been working on a plan to, to have nurses to, to fill our vacancies if and when we know they come up. You know, we can't guarantee that it's going to be enough to fill the vacancies, but, but we're doing everything we can do, both with our own staff and with agency nurses, to, to try to have folks on deck to fill in when necessary.
And, and I understand we're in more trying times, but I don't remember a school ever...
That's an interesting scenario in that we're really talking about.
Hold on, hold on a second, John. Kenny, I think you need to get closer to your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said, I, I know we're in trying times, but when was a school, when was the last time a school got closed because there wasn't a nurse? And what, what happened in the past to solve this? Because people still got sick.
A lot of times, if you couldn't get a nurse...
I know.
You had to contact the fragile, the parents of the fragile students, and if they were okay with the child remaining in school and gave, let's say, the principal the opportunity to care for the, their child, the child was able to stay at school. But in the absence of a nurse, those real fragile students were asked, you know, to be sent home, at least in my day. I don't know whether things have changed a bit.
And now, we have more and more of our fragile students in their least restrictive environment, in their home school. So, you know, in the past five, 10 years, we've had to go from LPNs to RNs in every school because of that. And we've also had to have floater nurses available for us as well as agency nurses. So it's been a while since we have not had a nurse in a school available. And like I said, we're, we're utilizing our floaters. We have some people on deck ready to go, but it's just a possibility.
So Cindy, how many do we have in the pool now? Do we have a, a good sized pool of, of floaters or, or nurses available?
I'll, I'll ask Mr. Streaker, he may have more numbers.
Currently, we have eight people identified, which is not many. It sounds like a lot, but that's eight total people.
Right.
And many of these people, folks have, have other jobs. So there, that doesn't mean eight people are available every day. I want to be clear that those eight people, they may only be available on Tuesday, and they may only want to work in the southern region versus other areas based on their, where they... Mr. Kyler, one thing I wanted to, just to, to add, and Dr. Dorsey gave a great explanation, as did Ms. McCabe, in the midst of a pandemic, there's also specialized training that our nurses need to have as far as donning and doffing PPE. And I think we owe it to our families to be sure that we have a registered nurse available for their children. You know, certainly, it's our goal to always have a nurse in schools, but we are in the midst of a pandemic. And, and when we have a pandemic that is a, a global health concern, I think we absolutely need to have a nurse who has the skill and the training to respond appropriately to our children, evaluate them appropriately, and to be sure that not only are they safe, but the, the student they're seeing is safe, but they're not putting themselves in jeopardy or other students in jeopardy that they may see following. So, you know, th- this is certainly a time where we need a nurse in every school, and very differently than in other, other cases. You're correct, Mr. Kyler, that we've had cases in the past where we may not have had a nurse and maybe used one nurse that's very close, like I'll use Linton Springs and Century High School as they're, they're adjacent to one another, and we've done some creative things in the past. But we're in different times.
Board members, let me also state that there is a healthcare provider exception under the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, which in my opinion is applicable to school nurses, but I should tell you that MSEA takes a contrary position. I think our position is solidified by the revised U.S. Department of Labor regulations and, and rules that went into effect on September 16 of this year. However, it put aside Family First Coronavirus Response Act, it, it, it still is a fact that nurses, just like any other employees, are entitled to the use of their accrued even in the event of illness and regular FMLA in the event of the need to care for a family member who's ill. But at least with respect to the childcare provision of FFRA, in, in our opinion, that does not apply to school nurses and other school health providers.
Thank you, Mr. O'Malley. And I, I just wanted to add one last thing to what Mr. Streaker said. At, at least during the, the pandemic period, while our, our protocols with the Carroll County Health Department, Mr. Singer and his, his folks are in place, there's parts of that protocol that require the licensed clinician to be in the full PPE. And that includes some, some of the PPEs, very, very specific. It's, it's actually, at this point at least, provided by the Health Department and fitted to the individual nurse. And so there, there isn't another person available, even if they wanted to, who could step in and, and fulfill that requirement. And maybe we don't have to invoke that protocol on a given day, and I, I understand that that could be possible, and so that wouldn't be an issue. But that's a tough risk to run, to not be in a situation where we have the only, the only clinician who's trained and fitted for that protocol to be in place. So if you have more questions, we'll take them. If not, we'll flip ahead to scenario four. There are only six. The good news is, on this one, it's, it could be a two for one, because if you like and agree with our strategies here, it actually takes care of the next agenda item on your full formal agenda at the same time. But this is sort of like the nurses, something that maybe a, a person in general might not give a lot of thought to. But another area that's, that's of concern to, to me and Mr. Prokop and others is, is our custodial staffing. And, you know, as we open more and more, as we consider adding more, more aspects to our school system that are being opened, we had a little bit of conversation about this during the, the one discussion we had on indoor use of facilities. I'm increasingly concerned that we may stress our resource, our folks, beyond, beyond what we can reasonably expect. And as I, I put this up here and look at it again, I worked on this with Mr. Prokop. You, I'm gonna go with the first shift, especially in an elementary school as the example, but you could, you could apply it in other cases, you could apply it to the second shift, I think, especially in an elementary school, or at any school where, you know, if we got into an exposure situation with the day shift or, or the evening shift of our custodians, we could have the same kind of problem. And so, but for the sake of this discussion, you know, at your, at many elementary schools, the first shift custodian, custodial shift is typically a single person. And so if that person can't be in for any of the, any of the reasons we've, we've discussed with all the other scenarios, then that gives us a big problem because we have cleaning and disinfecting protocols to go on throughout the day and then also in the evening. Throughout the day could mean a lot of places, but most especially it will mean the, the health suites and the isolation rooms to the extent that they're used. And so I, I believe what, what a, what a principal would do, what Mr. Prokop and his folks would support a principal in doing if it were the day shift person calling out, is you'd probably, you'd probably call up your, your evening shift person to try to fill in for the day. But then, you know, even if you're able to cover that requirement for cleaning and disinfecting, then that leaves the, the evening exposed and no one there to do kind of the, the high touch areas that are required every night so that the school can reopen in the morning under the guidelines that, that the CDC, MSD have developed for us that are now part of our plan. And so that's, that's, that's a big concern. And it's, it's a concern everywhere, but it's especially a concern at the elementary level, just given the staffing numbers. And, and let me say that, to me, this group of folks, they've been working the whole time, they've done everything that we've asked of them and more. We have no doubt that they'll step up and work with us right now on this. I can't say enough about the work that our building operations folks have done from the beginning, but I do worry about the stress and strain over time, and I do worry about this scenario. And so I talk to Dr. Locker often. We probably have discussed this to some, some extent in some of these update meetings, but I've asked Ray and I've asked him to work with Shantris to, to meet with our ASME employee group, the representatives from ASME, just to make sure everyone's comfortable, that we're not trying to, to work beyond a collective bargaining agreement or anything like that, and explore some strategies that, that we can put in place to mitigate these kinds of circumstances. Because again, our goal is to not shut down a school or part of a school if, if we can do anything, we can to avoid it. And just like everything else we've been discussing with staffing tonight, I, I do know that there's a fiscal impact of this, and, and create Mr. Hartl as part of all these conversations, and ultimately, we'll have to sort all of that out in our monthly fiscal impact reports with you. But I've asked him to look at some solutions, whether that's the ability to temporarily assign perhaps a different ASME employee to a cleaning and disinfecting role, whether that's the possibility of contracting external services, although I'm not really sure that there's a high availability there, or whether that's hiring sort of a cadre or a group of temporary employees who could be properly trained for all of our protocols, and sort of serve as a kind of a CCPS response team, whether it's to, to hit the, hit the high touch areas at night or to respond to a specific school who's experiencing a, you know, an unusually difficult exposure situation or something like that. So these are all things we're looking at. These are some ideas we've also gleaned from some of our, our fellow school systems in Maryland, and, and we're exploring them. And I guess what I'm, what I'm really getting at is, we really would like your, your blessing to, to move from exploring to a solution if, if we hit the one that we think is, is the most feasible, the most viable for us.
And, and, you know, I think you have to, but one question. Prior to the leave situation even, were we fully staffed with custodians? Do we have some vacancies? Are we looking for some? How, I know it's always seems tight to fill those positions.
We, we always have vacancies, and, and there's been strain on that, and I, I won't belabor this, it, it sort of is what it is. But, you know, custodial FTE is a, is a place where we cut, I think it was 29 over the prior decade or so. And not only did we cut those, those positions, you know, ultimately out of the budget, the net effect of that, of those reductions also meant we shared FTE. So we split some of the custodians between two schools, and that might be, you know, part of the shift, or more than likely, that's one day here and one day there, that kind of a split FTE. So there's been a strain there anyway. There's a relatively, well, there's a higher attrition rate in that group of folks than, say, for instance, among your teachers, although it's not unbearably high compared to, to the industry as a whole nationwide. So there's always vacancies, Mr. Kyler. I don't know that there, in my mind, I'll ask Ray or Shantris if they want to chime in. I don't know that there was an unusually high number at, at any point prior to the pandemic than there would be at any other point.
No, we've seen pretty consistent hiring with regards to the number of vacancies. However, the candidate pool has significantly diminished since the pandemic has begun.
I think someone had their hand, Ms. Herbert has her hand up.
Yes, and I can attest that as long as I taught in high school, there was a, a large turnover of, of custodians. It's just the, the way it was way, way back when, and it still is, so.
We did, now that I'm thinking about that question, Mr. Kyler, we, we did have in some ways a delay of hiring all the way across the board. If you think back several, I couldn't even pinpoint when the meeting was, I would guess somewhere around July. One of the things that Dr. Lockard shared was that we had invoked some, some limited contracts with services to do outsourced fingerprinting and paper, onboarding paper, employment paperwork, digital paperwork. So there was a bit of a delay at the beginning of this when we were sort of all in complete shutdown mode and, and trying to figure it out and how we go where, where Shantris and her folks weren't really able to, to bring anyone on board, almost in any position because of those logistics. We, we worked that out, I want to think back in July, Shantris, or early August, though.
It was begin, early August.
So there could have been a, there could have been a bit of a backlog at that time, that, that may be fair.
Thank you.
Okay. So, board members, I'll, I'll leave that, that dangling as a question that you might, we would hope you might consider is, would you be okay with us employing one of these, one of these strategies listed here, or if you have others in mind? But we, this is simply like, sort of like classrooms, this is just another area, we're looking to have some assurance, some backup, some assurances that we could do all we can to keep classes and schools open with, with the appropriate additional resource. Next scenario.
I mean, I, I guess the only thing I would say, the only reason why we wouldn't employ this is if we were worried about budget issues, right? And, and I think that we're in a, a solid fund balance situation that we need to say, like, this, this is the rainy day, and if, if it's a budget constraint, then we, we just assume that, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna dip into fund balance to handle this, and, and we do it. We do what it takes.
That's how we were looking at it, and we were also remembering that John referenced this. Each of our regular meetings each month, we are bringing updates on budget impacts. And so there's not going to be too many, there's not going to be a month that goes by where you don't see that, that impact, where, where that is in relation to our overall budget. So we, we feel pretty confident that we can, you know, we want to be able to respond to these things and make sure that we're doing some preventative things to stay out in front of these, these sorts of different scenarios as best we can. But at the same time, we're going to provide you monthly updates for the budget impact. So if there's some big, giant concern somewhere, we're going to bring it to you anyway.
I did have a question concerning which employees you would reassign. It says to reassign employees to cleaning roles as needed. So which folks?
I'll ask Mr. Prokop to give you a forest.
Well, we, I, one of the ideas we had, we haven't fully fleshed it out, is to use, to utilize high school staffing to, to supplement the, the elementary, for instance. They, they're, they're the ones that we feel are the most vulnerable, and we would do that in some sort of a regional fashion, and we would, we're gonna, there's going to be a meeting tomorrow with building supervisors in which we'll start to flesh out a plan to, to be able to do that. start to flesh out a plan to to be able to do that.
But Mr. Prokop, do you have floaters? Didn't you used to have floaters? Do you still have that?
Uh yes, but very few. We only have five. Um the floaters were positions that when Mr. O'Neill mentioned earlier, uh those positions were cut. The floaters were part of that. So uh we have a very small pool. That that pool of floaters is uh it has probably uh three times more need than we have floaters for on any given day during a normal school year.
And we get all those emails to prove that. Um but um that kind of gets to, I know we've moved ahead on the screen at my request, but that kind of gets to one of those possible strategies um of expanding temporarily of a kind of a pool of people or a group of people to be 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 sort of our CCPS response team. That's that's sort of what I had in mind in wanting Mr. Prokop to explore that with ASME as one idea. Mr. Kyler, is that you take that floater pool and just for the duration of this of this pandemic, which which has to end someday, it has to. Um that that.
Can we have a party when that happens?
We we cre- we cre- we increase that FTE total or position total of five to something that 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 makes sense based on what others who've done something similar are seeing. And I don't I don't know what that number would be, but maybe 10 or or 15 or something like that, where we have these people who are being paid, so they're always available. And they've been properly trained, they've been trained for our protocols, the the uh cleaning, disinfecting solutions that we use and how it works, the machine, the machines that we use in the evening. So we have a much better feeling about how that how that might work as a solution. Um at least I do than than maybe just uh even if an external service existed, bringing bringing in folks who really otherwise don't really have that much knowledge of our system or our processes. So that's, you're sort of touching on one of those ideas with that question. Okay, the the next scenario is um, this is something that um Mr. Streaker, when he eloquently went through the exposure protocol last time and talked about a pick one and a pick two menu and what we have to do when somebody exhibits a symptom or or a couple of symptoms. This is one of the things we also had out there as a for instance, uh or or an additional piece of information for you and and the schools and the public. Um outside of that exposure protocol, the 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 symptom, what happens when there are symptoms? The flow chart that that Carl had that we had broken out, there's also this CDC MSD cleaning protocol uh that's that's kind of its own thing. And it it basically says, well, I actually have quoted part of the CDC there, but it basically says when there's an exposure or potential exposure um in in a general space, a classroom, a media center, that that sort of thing, then if to the extent possible, you or as they say, as long as practical, you would close off that space for 24 hours. And again, to I think you had a question like this earlier, we're not talking about the whole school because somebody walked down the hallway once or or went to the bathroom once. Bathrooms get cleaned and disinfected every night. But maybe the classroom where that person is, you know, all day or or more than half of the day, that space would be closed for up to up to 24 hours. And then after that period of closure is when the dis- the the disinfecting or the 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 cleaning and disinfecting occurs again to then bring the space back online. Um we've worked on on this protocol with Mr. Singer. We've had some some meetings with him to make sure we're understanding it and and implementing it in a way that's appropriate. And so one of the things, you know, there's a lot of, as with any of these, there's a million possibilities, but you know, it's not as bad as it sounds at face value because it we're also talking about if the exposed person or the person with symptoms was there within the last 24 hours. So the Wednesday and the hybrid schedule helps, the weekends help. So it's not always that every space where there's an exposure is going to be shut down for the full 48 hours, 24 closed and then the cleaning. But up to 48 hours, that's kind of the cleaning protocol that happens when there's an exposure. Unfortunately, that causes a problem for schools when when we have to evoke the uh the CDC protocol to to clean and and disinfect. And I'll ask the directors if they're still with us to talk about how they how they try to deal with that when a space, which is precious to start with, suddenly is taken offline for the disinfecting.
Yes, thank you, Mr. O'Neill. So again, I'll I'll continue with my theme of Singleton's. Uh you mentioned uh an auditorium, which we're going to use as classrooms many times. But we may only have one band room, we have one graphics communication lab. So some of these areas with to do without them for a day, uh that class can't function as normal. We may be able to relocate them, we may not have a choice. Those students may not have that class, may be sent home, depending on the dynamic. So again, it's problematic, especially with some of the more special things. Again, like a science lab, the, you know, the biology class wants to do, you know, one of the main reasons to attend is to do a lab, they may not be able to do a lab that day. So that that's how it becomes problematic. At the bigger high schools, uh and then certainly at the smaller levels, uh the smaller buildings in middle and elementary, they just don't have a physical room sometimes to relocate to.
This does have uh, you know, some extreme implications at the elementary level. Again, uh most of our rooms are utilized. And so that if we have to close a room, we'll do our best to try to relocate students. Um but you know, if they are in their own classroom and then maybe they travel to an art room um and they have a full art period or another room, we may have to unclose several rooms um, you know, at the elementary school uh to ensure that they are cleaned. Um and those students then would uh, you know, be sent home and then would receive virtual instruction.
In the middle school, it's the same thing. We're rotating classes. I I've asked principals in the hybrid model to look at where we can move teachers, but it's minimal at best that we'll be able to do that. Related arts, they're going to be moving. So it may not be just a single space that we're losing at at any time period. It may be multiple spaces. So principals are going to be challenged with finding creative spaces and utilizing them. So we're going to need to have some flexibility with the students on on where they would go and how that would look as we make sure our buildings are cleaned and disinfected.
You've heard uh as solutions to um more than one of these scenarios, um mention of moving students to a different area. So um you know, we're gonna do that as best we can and just hope that we don't have um, you know, too many of these scenarios happening at one time so that our our solutions don't bump into one another.
Okay, and then the the last scenario is one that we we don't have any reason to believe is going to be rampant, but we know it it is possible. If Brenda or Bob, if you could skip to the last one. And that's uh that's simply, you know, there may be days for all of the same reasons where a bus driver or or a bus assistant or both aren't able to go, whether that's a call out for illness or whether that's there's been an exposure and um there's a, you know, up to the 14 day or so uh quarantine protocol. And um it's not like this unfortunately has never happened. But but I will say for for my money, historically, we've had much less of of days when a certain bus didn't go than in the than other school systems around us might experience over time. And so this this isn't something that our parents are really all that accustomed to happening. Um you know, not having a bus come by that that on a given day or not being able to run and and either being notified the night before or or that morning. Uh even if you think back to the happy world before the pandemic, we were experiencing, our our contractors were experiencing a a driver shortage like we had never seen before. And for us, it was it was, you know, it was confounding because we never had had any buses hardly ever not run. And we were seeing that a little bit. But pre-pandemic, Mr. Hardisty and his folks were able to work out solutions in almost every case, doubling up a couple of buses, you you know, making making that coverage somehow happen. We won't have that kind of flexibility or luxury in the pandemic because of the um social distancing on bus uh requirements that are in our plan and approved by MSD. And so there there can and and most likely will be some scenarios where there just simply won't be a a bus on a given day. And um if parents aren't able to transport, um then then those students would would have to participate in virtual learning for for that day or in the worst case scenario, some portion of a quarantine if uh if the contractors aren't able to to have the sub- have substitute drivers and assistants be in place. So tho- those aren't all of them, obviously, but those are some of the scenarios that we've long known would would come with moving to a hybrid model with all of the pandemic requirements and protocols. So we just felt like it was important to to maybe take it from the kinds of discussions we've had up to now, which was just sort of general references or or passing comments and lay out some scenarios so that so that everyone and all of you, but everyone in the community, all of our parents can can begin to be aware of these things and 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 know that, you know, unfortunately, some of them might occur throughout throughout the hybrid model and and we'll do our best to respond to them. But in every case, we're probably not going to find a solution.
John, help me understand how many of these are specific to the hybrid? These don't seem like they're issues that are specific to the hybrid. They're just issues of opening up in any shape.
Well, yeah, the um the custodial ones are um both the sh- what happens if there's a, you know, half of the shift at an element, half of the population at elementary is gone. That, you know, that happens or has happened in the past, obviously. But we don't have to meet the disinfecting uh requirement, the disinfection, uh disinfecting protocol overnight or during the day requirement that that the pandemic requires. Um the response teams, this is the same thing to get to get to that. Um the the other custodial related example of the cleaning protocol when there's an exposure, that's very specific to the to the pandemic, the one on the screen.
Well, no, 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 not not specific to the pandemic, I understand that, but that it would be different under full, a full reopening versus a hybrid reopening. Right?
Well, I see what you're saying, yes, yes. I guess I was thinking, I I, yes, you're correct. I was thinking more virtual versus hybrid, where we've been to where we're about to head is is what in my mind, for whatever it's worth, that's why I was answering the way it was. That what changes between where we've been up till now is is the trigger date for for hybrid is when these things uh begin to happen. But you're right, they would extend as long as all those protocols are in place beyond hybrid into full. You're absolutely correct.
Um one question I had, you know, we were discussing, you know, possibly offering, you know, the four days for the teachers. What about other staff? Like making, is it offered to them as well to make sure that we have the IAs, we have the cafeteria staff? You know, is there a potential for that too? Or is it, or we were, or are we just talking teachers?
Well, I don't I don't know. And I I don't know if Chantris could answer specifically what kind of FFCRA numbers we're seeing for those other areas. Uh I I'll be honest, for for me, um Ms. Pataglia, my focus has been on on teachers, at least for now, that to try to get those classrooms staffed and filled with a teacher record, even at virtual, and then somebody there. Um I, you know, I I also would defer to Cindy and and the directors on what that would mean for classes and spacing and um and of course, the bus, the bus questions would have to be worked through. But it it wasn't sort of a philosophical, it was only teachers. It was just that was the, that's the big, uh you you know, the big immediate staffing challenge in front of us.
Right, I mean, certainly, I I'm sure that there are other employee groups who may may want to make use of an opportunity like that. Um we were just trying to solve um the issue of, you know, not having a teacher in in front of students or, you know, supervision for students, you know, the uh something that would have to have us shut down. Um the other reason that we would um that we might want to limit um that opportunity is that um, you know, w- we're looking at our cohorts very closely right now, our cohorts A and B. And w- we don't want to grow them such that um we have difficulty getting the amount of social distancing that we want to be able to get between students. So um, you know, as long as we took those things into consideration, we could certainly look beyond the teacher pool.
Chantris, uh how many case staff have filed due to daycare?
Uh due to daycare? Well, uh I have how many staff has? So we have, just give you one second, just doing a tally. We have 30 case staff members who have applied. Um generally, that is family first corona response leave. Each employee group has a different um this different value in regards to ADA, whether or not we can accommodate um their request. Case has a more of a flexible responsibility for us, uh a physical responsibility for us as a school system. So there, our ability to accommodate their request for ADA is very limited because we need them to be there to physically support our students. Family First Corona Response Act, that's the 30 that we do have. Uh those are for individuals with seeking childcare needs. But I'm thinking that the option that we discussed earlier during the meeting in regards to having staffs stu- that need to report would also be applicable to case.
That number was 30, Chantris? 30 case employees for FFCRA? Okay.
Now, I'm just wondering, because I mean, I know we've, we have seen some of our emails, you know, some of the teachers are concerned about when we're doing the hybrid and having that person in the room to help them or if they're doing the virtual and then you're having that person in the room that is like supervising the classroom in a sense. So I was thinking that some of those follow fall under case. So you maybe, you know, potentially, depending upon what the teacher looks like, what the students coming back, seeing if you can offer it to case too, because I, again, we don't want to, we want that staff to help out too. I mean, I'm I'm just trying to look at all the the different body parts of this.
Sure, I will tell you um the concern with offering um case or the or members to work virtually is we need for them to be there to physically support the students. So if they go into a virtual format as well, I believe that will create even more difficulty for us to appropriately stack the buildings.
Right, our our instructional assistants are going to be used um primarily for supervision responsibilities when we come back in the hybrid model. So we definitely need them back in person.
Right, and that's.
So I think your your point is a valid one, and that is if this is another option option available to um those 30 or so that might make a difference about whether they can physically be there or not, I think it behooves us to ask them as well, um uh Chantris.
That that's what, that's why I was stating earlier, I thought we were going to offer it to them. So any staff that have initiated FFCRA request, that we would ask them, would they be willing to report in the hybrid format? I mean, so if we could offer their students the ability to report during cohort cohort A and B.
I think that makes sense. Everybody agree with that?
Yeah, I think we need them all.
We'll we'll make that happen and as part of as part of what we'll bring you back at next Wednesday's um meeting. And you know, with that, Bob or Brenda, you can, I think you can close the screen, at least from our perspective. We appreciate you letting us walk through those scenarios and your thoughtful questions. And we'll, you know, these things will come up and we'll address them. Um so we're happy to answer any other questions, have any more conversation. Uh I I did want to remind that, you know, that that one scenario took care of item 2. C, building operation resources, that's also on your agenda. That had to deal with the um with with the additional resources for for Ray's folks for for to meet the disinfection protocols.
And John, thank you, because um these questions have been popping up on our emails. And I think that will give people more information um and make them more at ease um so that the unknown is scary for a lot of people. And I think uh this, these six scenarios were uh definitely clarified tonight, and I think will help parents feel better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Herbert. We're also, uh Ms. McCabe and the directors, the principals are sending out more and more info through the schools that are sort of other FAQ kinds of things. We're also revising the central FAQ to deal with those, uh you know, not so much the staffing items, but all those other questions that we know you're seeing in your email that we're seeing in ours. We hope to have a new FAQ up centrally early next week. Uh so thank you for that.
That's a nice segue to Cindy on the next agenda item as it relates to.
Can I ask, can I ask one more question before we jump? Or and oh, actually, it's two twofold questions. You hear rumors that other other counties are doing furloughs, layoffs, whatever. Some of them that aren't talking about going back in, and I don't know if the governor backed that off. I don't even know if that's true. But is there any pool, any place we can look to draw from to try to get employees? Do you have the option of getting temporary or once you hire? Do you have the option of getting temporary or once you hire a, a teacher, they're here? And then secondly, I think the governor, when he changed some of the rules, also said he was making money available. Is, is that true? And do we have any hopes of getting any of that?
Yes, there was an additional, we, can we take those in reverse order, Mr. Kyler?
Whatever you'd like.
Okay. There was an additional, um, grant that was part of, that, part of what the governor and the state superintendent talked about at that, at that last joint press conference they had. Mr. Hartlove and the CFOs around the state have additional details, have received additional details on that. And I'd prefer to have Chris jump in and, and fill in a thumbnail of what that means for us. It was a ten million dollar statewide grant, and, uh, I know he has a sense of.
Yes, it's, it's ten million dollars for reopening. Uh, you get he- half of the dollars are, uh, spread to all, all districts, two hundred thousand dollars each. So you get two hundred thousand dollars, uh, as a base, you, each jurisdiction gets that. Then, uh.
Is that whether they open or not?
Whether, uh, that's my understanding, yes. Everyone's going to get two hundred, two hundred thousand for that. That, that's, yeah, that's four point eight million, it's, that's about half of it. The other half will be given based upon the enrollment the second week of November, uh, which they, they consider that the, um, the start of the second quarter. So if you have, when they're going to look at it, um, the, the start of the second quarter, whoever you have, um, in school, they're going to do a count and they're going to, uh, allocate out the rest of the, the additional five point two million statewide that way. We're, we're estimating right now, we may get, um, four hundred to maybe five hundred thousand dollars, but it will depend, the, the reason you can't really say specifically at this point is it depends on how many students come back statewide, because they're only putting ten million out regardless. So if more students come back, then you get less per student. If fewer students come back state, statewide, then you get more per student.
What was that date again?
It's, it's not a specific date, but they, I think it's the second week of Nov- November. That's, that's kind of what they are considering, the, uh, the start of the second quarter.
Well, I, uh, we, we need to check that because the start of, a lot of districts started the second quarter got pushed back, cause many districts push their start date back. Um, um, so I think it's going to be whatever the start of the second quarter is for districts. We'll, we'll double check that for sure.
And as for the question of, well, sorry, as for the, of when you hire, what does that mean in terms of, uh, of collective bargaining? Uh, first of all, I think you also asked about other systems, um, riffing or furloughing. I, I think I'm aware, Juan Chantress may know if, if there's, if that's even accurate or if there's more. When, when you hire somebody at the, at the highest possible level, if we were to hire a teacher or even an instructional assist, whatever collective bargaining, um, employee group they would belong to, if they meet the legal definitions in the law and what's in their contract, then technically they would be included, um, in, as part of the unit. However, I think, I think Chantress has had very reasonable and, or at least early on productive conversations with some of the associations that we can all recognize that, that we were talking about hiring a group of folks specifically in response to the pandemic and, and what that means as we implement our different models. So at the end of the day, each of those agreements would have RIF language or reduction in force language, and that would dictate, you know, ultimately, who would be, who would be released when the time period passes, that the need is no longer there for positions. Uh, is that accurate, Chantress?
You are accurate. So, so we have entered into conversations with case in regards to temporarily hiring staff, we made our FY twenty one to help us with our pandemic staffing efforts. So you are indeed accurate.
Looks like Mr. O'Neely might want to amend what I said.
Sorry about, no. Uh, the, the only thing that I would, uh, question is that, uh, there's a technical difference between furloughs and reductions in force. Mr. O'Neill appropriately addressed reductions in force. But with respect to certificated employees, it's a very different, uh, process than for non-certificated employees, because there is a, a, uh, relatively small window for reductions in force for certificated employees except for in the regular contract, which is, uh, in Comar, and, and, and we're clearly not within that window at this point in time. Uh, it's budgetary based, uh, and is almost always done in June. Uh, so.
But, but I'm more worried about finding people. I- is, for instance, if another county did that, that was close, do we have the opportunity to hire those people or are they protected or paid or whatever for a while?
So, Mr. Kyler, we can only, uh, enter into employment with them if they are released from their current system, much like some of our employees who have employment offers from competing systems with us, and we have declined them because they're past the deadline to move it for this year, because of our staffing needs within Carroll County.
Okay, thanks.
So the way, just to be, you know, so the way that works real quick is if, if somebody applies to us and it appears like they're still in some type of a status with another school system, Chantress will reach out to her counterpart in that school system and they'll have that conversation to make sure it's, uh, it's an appropriate hire and that the person's released.
So, Dr. Lockard, help me understand, so in Pennsylvania, where many of the school systems have opened, have they experienced the issues with leave and, and had, like, I'm, I'm trying to understand why this is such a big problem for us if they, if they weren't experiencing it in Pennsylvania, or did they experience it and how did they handle it?
So obviously, I'm not as familiar with Pennsylvania districts. I have to imagine that, um, they have had to navigate through similar circumstances. I know my counterparts here in Maryland. Um, we're, we're wrestling with it kind of on the forefront right now because, um, we're considering the, the hybrids start a lot earlier than, than most districts are. Governor and state superintendent has asked us to start bringing students back to school, which we've done. Um, now we're looking at a much bigger, uh, jump here, and I think this is waiting, this scenario is waiting for a lot of the other districts here in Maryland, some of them already experiencing it. So, um, in terms of, you know, Pennsylvania, um, you, you also have to consider some of those are small districts with, um, uh, one high school, maybe, um, a, a middle school and a couple elementary schools. Um, and perhaps, uh, with, with a different structure and different resources, they're able to cobble together or navigate through that. Uh, maybe the impacts have been low, maybe they've been high, but I'm sure they've had to, to deal with those challenges. I believe that the coronavirus family leave is a federal, uh, piece of, uh, uh, legislation that is afforded to everybody in those school systems. Um, I'm not sure about their, um, local agreements or what perhaps their local, uh, or their state, um, contract calls for.
I guess I'm, I'm, I'm trying to take the attitude of we can do this, not we can't do this, right? Like, a lot of, a lot of this discussion is all the reasons why we were struggling and I'm, I'm trying to turn it into how can we make this happen, right? And I think that, you know, there are a lot of school districts that have opened up and we can look at, you know, okay, well, would, do we don't have to reinvent the wheel if there was something that worked for them? You know, can, can we reach out and get some of those ideas? And, and also just like throwing out any idea that we can, right? Like in terms of, like, we already talked about the FFCRA leave and if we allowed teachers to have their kids go four days a week, how much does that alleviate? If we decided that we were going to increase class sizes in the interim, because, um, you know, if we have thirty percent of the, the students staying virtual, um, that means that, you know, we're not going to be butting up against that fifty percent from a hybrid that are going to be in the room. So can you increase some of the class sizes so that you would need one less teacher for a grade at some of our elementary schools or something like that? Um, you know, and you had thrown in an idea of potentially moving some kids around to, at the elementary level, right? We know that that's not going to work nearly as well for middle and high, but.
I'll be honest with you, I, not because it's not a solution, I just think about, I, I, I know that it's not going to be a very popular option, um, for our parents and for a lot of kids who've grown accustomed to their teacher over the first seven weeks. But, and I'm trying to think what, what that would be by October nineteenth, but close to that. Um, so I'm stating the obvious, I know.
And, and I think what, what, what you guys have presented so far tonight, um, and I'm, I'm trying to be totally optimistic too, that, that we can get through a lot of this, but I think we owe it to the parents and we owe it to staff to be as transparent as possible, that yes, there will be cases and yes, your class may be shut down for a day. And, and I, I know you ask about PA and I see a little bit up there, knowing some of their board members up there. South, and, and I don't want to see this happen. Southwest opened and the second week they shut down for a week. Now since then, they've had, they've had a couple issues, but no problems. Um, they're doing hybrid and, uh, their governor would let them go full and they didn't, and I think they're hating themselves for that. I see, uh, an elementary in Gettysburg got closed for a week too, for two cases. So we are blessed, um, I don't know if we still have a health department on here, but they don't have a health department like we do, and, and I don't think they react as quickly, and I think they did some black and white rules. I know we talked earlier about numbers. They did some black and white rules on what happened after they were open, and they got burned by them and then changed them. And again, we, we're ahead of the game, I think, again, because of our local health department and the cooperation you guys have already done on what would happen if there is a case. And, and it'd be, in my humble opinion, it sounds like it'll be handled quickly and with the least impact as possible. But we still owe it to make sure these parents are deciding if they want their child to come back or not, know that this is a possibility and that's a possibility. And, and hopefully none of them happen, but if they do, we're forewarning them, and we have to.
And I just want to be honest and transparent with everybody, as, you know, that, you know, as we look at these numbers and we know they're still changing just a little bit, our, our, as Ms. McCabe described, our principals are going to be really unpacking and trying to figure out the puzzle that is. Um, I think we do have to have in, in, in our decision making, I want to go back to the, you know, the, the metrics. Um, I, I'd like us not to be in the higher risk of transmission. Um, and then, uh, we also need to, to understand, I guess, and realize that there are some places where I think we're going to be able to, to, to manage, um, y- y- you know, uh, staffing, but I don't, I don't know that that's going to be universally true a- at every school. And so I think we need to be open to alternatives, um, so that we can best support students and their, and the continuity of instruction.
Um, okay, so real quick, any of the cameras, so anybody out there that's, you know, teacher, friends of teachers, and if they're chatting or talking, start opening a conversation, you know, let people know to email us that our teachers from, you know, we have teachers that live in Hanover, so have them email us, how are your neighbors doing it? How are your neighbor teachers doing it? How are the kids doing it? Like email us and let us know these things. Those things help. Like, I mean, that, that's, it's, to be honest, I mean, that really helps. So any of the, anybody talking online right now or anything? No, I'm not. I'm just letting you say, anybody talking online because they're watching this? Um, just reach out, let us know how it's working up there.
And don't forget, we're actually doing it in, here in Carroll County.
Right.
If you walk over to the Career Tech Center, and that's about to expand again.
Yes.
The LFI program's going to expand, I think that's next week. Um, we have special education students, um, Gateway Crossroads is opening in a hybrid next week. So we, we do have examples of, of that happening.
Can we, can we go into a little bit more detail about that? Can we say, okay, how many special ed kids do we have in already? How many career and tech kids do we have in already? What are the immediate plans for next week? I know that we, we've been talking about regularly expanding it. Can we, can we get a better understanding of where we are on those numbers?
And have we had any issues? You know, because from what I hear, it's, it's gone pretty well.
If we could have Nick speak to, uh, the special ed programming and then Jason, maybe Angie or, or if, uh, if Bill is on the line for career and tech.
Before you all start, uh, Mr. Anderson gave me a great synopsis of that last week, and you had it in those phases. I don't know if you have that in front of you, but that was awesome because he, you did have a great breakdown on that.
Thanks, Ms. Herbert. And Dr. Lockard, um, I'll go ahead and lead in. Mr. Mr. Shockney had Root Canal today, so I don't know how.
Oh.
How loquacious he is right now, but, um.
Thank you.
I will start off with, with, with sharing. Uh, Mr. Kyler, we, we've had a very successful experience, um, in our special education, uh, bringing students back with our specialized programs. Um, Mr. Shockney and I have visited, uh, nearly, uh, almost all of those classes over the past couple of weeks. Um, we had about, had four hundred and eleven students that were enrolled in our specialized programs. We have about a hundred and seventy-three of them attend, um, and we're very much looking forward to, as Dr. Lockard said, next week, um, to, uh, bring in an additional, uh, seventy, additional students in another specialized program. Um, as far as CTC is concerned, that too has been, uh, successful. We did have, um, one, one, uh, experience of, uh, of an exposure, but overall, it's been, um, it's been, it's been great. Our kids have, um, have received it well, our teachers have been excited about it. And again, I can't, I can't, I can't say enough about our teachers and our administrators in these buildings, making all of this happen. Um, as you know, we, we started with twelve programs in the CTC. That was a, that was a priority of, of, of the board and the school system. About two hundred and forty-eight, uh, students to, have, have taken part in those twelve programs. Um, we are looking, um, on October fifth to add an additional eight programs, um, as Ms. Herbert was talking about in phase number two. Uh, and that is going to be approximately another three hundred plus students. So, um, and then as Dr. Lockard said, Gateway next week, October fifth. Um, CCPS should be proud to, uh, to share that, you know, we have nearly a thousand students coming into our buildings right now, and as Dr. Lockard said, we are, um, very much on the forefront of this. Um, but I will turn it over to Mr. Shockney to give any more specifics about not only what we're planning to do, um, in the weeks ahead, but we've also had lots of discussion about, okay, so if we were going to continue to expand this, um, as we move forward, what would that look like? Mr. Shockney, are you available and, and able?
Sure, I'm, I'm good. Good evening, board members and Dr. Lockard. Um, it, it's, it's, we, we've had great success so far, um, it, but it had, it, you know, it, it has had its challenges, um, and we've worked to, to overcome those as, as best we can. Um, so we've been very strategic in our ability to phase in our supports for our students with disabilities. Obviously, depending how things go, there are other groups of students, um, that we would like to target if, 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 if possible, depending upon, you know, when we start back with, uh, with hybrid for everyone. If we couldn't do that for some reason, um, there are other groups of students with disabilities that we would like to expand the in-person services, um, to include. And when we, we were considering a couple of different groups of students, um, some of our students with more intensive supports on their IEPs that we haven't met already, and then, uh, some other students just learning just through some different modalities or some other related services that have been very hard to do, like physical therapy, for example. It's very hard for us to do that in a virtual environment. So we, we do have some strategies for how we could expand, um, our in-person services if, if necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Shockney. And, uh, Ms. McCollum, I didn't know if you had anything else that you wanted to add in regards to.
Hey, Jason, hold on one second. Mr. Kyler has a question.
Sure.
Yeah, just, um, back to the, to, to his, his stuff going on. Most of that started like September fourteenth, so it's been a good two weeks, and then you've got some kicking in actually next Monday?
Correct. We, our first phase, um, of about a hundred and sixty-nine students started on September fourteenth, um, and then our last special program, we're, we're, we're targeting next week to, to begin that, which is our Learning for Independence program.
And, and next week, that'll include some stuff at high schools, correct?
Correct. Uh, and we, we have, we have programs happening birth through twenty-one right now, um, but we're going to expand our Learning for Independence programs, and we have five of those at the elementary school level, um, one at every middle school and one at every high school with the exception of East Middle currently.
Okay. I'm, I'm done, Jason, sorry.
I do want to say one thing, um, to go back to Mr. what Mr. Anderson said about the career and tech incident or whatever it was, but I will tell you.
Ms. Herbert, can you lean in to?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, uh, I think, uh, our leaders, our protocol and the health department worked really fast together, and it was all taken care of, so, um, thank you all for that, but.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with that. Nick, did you have any more you wanted to share?
Yeah, I mean, we, we have had exposures to, 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 to staff and to students, and , uh, we've, you know, we're working through those and, um, you know, there, there, you know, there is a bit of a risk in, in, in doing that, but there's also benefit in, in the, uh, supports that we're able to give to students. But, but let me be clear, our, 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 our teachers are working very, very hard to. hard to make this happen as well as our administrators. For our first phase, those were all teacher volunteers who are doing that. So it's, it's really to be commended. And again, it has not been without challenge. I want to be clear about that. And again, it does come with some risks. And again, not all of our families of our students in those special programs have chosen to continue. And again, as Mr. Anderson said, about, we have about a 411 students. So in our special programs as a whole, so about half of our families have, have, have expressed interest in in-person services. But again, not, not without its challenges.
Thanks for sharing that, Mr. Shockney. And, and just to reiterate what our directors clearly articulated, the necessity of our assistance to be in the rooms, supporting these programs is essential. It would not, could not happen without our, our support personnel and staff. They're amazing. So, Ms. McCausland, did you have anything you wanted to add in regards to CTC?
Good evening, everyone. So just to recap, our first group of about 200 students in construction, transportation, applied mechanical engineering, fashions, cosmetology, culinary and welding programs. They've all been at the tech center. Next week, we will be phasing in approximately another 300 students in Academy of Health Professions, print, video, bio medical science, our junior cosmetology students, building maintenance, engineering, and criminal justice. So we'll be having about 250 students per day as we move into the, to a hybrid model.
I was there the first day and that was like happy land. It was. It was happy land. Teachers and students alike.
Thank you, Ms. McCausland. And, and so President Savigny, you had said, you know, so what are some other potential visions for expansion? Obviously, as Mr. Shockney said, we, we do have a plan to continue to expand. Whenever we arrive at hybrid, if it is on the 19th, that's great. If it is not, then we do have a plan to expand our special education programming as, for as many special education students as we possibly can and through a phased approach. We also, the, the directors have been doing a great job. Ms. Judy Jones has been a conduit from our, our side of business to our school side of business. But I know Mr. King's on line. We've been, we, we really want to focus on students sooner rather than later, the sooner the better, of getting those students that don't have connectivity in their homes. And we know that our technology team, along with our school-based folks and administrators, have done a great job of getting hotspots, jet packs out to students and families. But there's still some areas in our county where they just can't get a signal. And so what we're committed to is looking at bringing in some of our students that don't have connectivity. I don't know, Ms. McCabe, did you want to speak specifically to that?
Yes. So, school directors have been working with principals to identify those students who may need to come into the school for internet, that internet resource. As Mr. Anderson said, most of our students have been served now by tech services with a wifi or a jet pack. So we're down to very few students who lack connectivity. But I'll turn it over to the school-based directors very quickly so that each of them can just talk about the students that they need, the number of students that may need access to a school or a media center for internet purposes.
Yeah, I'm happy to begin, Mrs. McCabe. Thank you. We have very few students, less than six officially at the high school level that are not connected. And a couple of them are new students to us. So we had gotten that number to zero. We've also had some students that lost their internet connection due to numerous reasons. So, working with Ms. Jones, there are certainly some different parameters we want to put in place. But if for some reason we, we could not move to the hybrid, this would be something that would go faster and expand. But even regardless, we can get this started ASAP and bringing students in who may need different supports, whether it be special ed, ESOL services, just a more dependable internet access because some of them have it, but they may be competing with brothers and sisters and parents who are working. And, and just that human touch sometimes and the, the support of an adult can be an enormous benefit to a kid. So all the high school principals are working on that literally as we speak and would, will be able to start. And a couple already have reached out to some students, inviting students to come into their learning centers.
Thank you, Mr. King. And I know Mr. Hill or Mr. Wernick?
Sure. At the middle school level, we presently have two students that were working directly with IT to get their connectivity. I just want to take a second to thank Jen Seashole and Sharon Minor from our IT department because every time we identified a student in, in the last couple of weeks, they have been diligent at getting the, either the wifi or the connection to Comcast or whatever the student needs. So I just wanted to really point them out right now and say thank you. But we too have identified spots in every school where we can expand and have more resource learning as, as we go forward if we need to, to meet the kids' needs. But a real, real shout out to them because we have the majority of our students connected and showing up and working online. So thank you to them.
So, Mr. Hill, that number of two is, is literally the, the only number throughout all of our middle schools that we have identified as not having connectivity?
That's it right now, yes.
That's awesome. That's amazing.
At the elementary level, we have a few more. We have about 15. And again, it may be because the internet central system is not connected to their home or that the hotspot just doesn't work because of the location of their home. So we have been working with those students to provide them, you know, other type of, of instructional services. But we would look to bring them in to the school to support them, either in the media center or some other classroom that's currently available, you know, for internet connectivity.
Thank you, Mr. Wernick. And so, and so we have already started today communicating with transportation. So Mr. Wernick just said, we're, we're adding to that database probably this evening, people are adding to it, where we can go ahead and get to the transportation and get this stood up ASAP.
And Mr. Anderson, that, that's such a small number that if we did open hybrid, that we would be able to add those kids to be in both cohorts, right? To be in A and B?
Yeah, that was something that Ms. McCabe, Dr. Lockard and I thought ourselves is that that could be the four day a week. And why wouldn't it be a four day a week, right? Where, where these students need it four days a week, if not five. But that would be certainly something we would shoot for and, and expect of ourselves.
And you already, you guys already complimented him, but anybody I've heard from, from this is a smarter on computers than I am, the kids. But they said, it didn't always work the first time, you know, it wasn't always perfect, but they said they were always given options and it worked out. So thank you, everyone.
We also, you know, we, we have plans right now. When I say plans, I, I mean, ready to be enacted. We'd like to, I'll turn it back over to Ms. McCausland. We're, we heard earlier today from Mr. King, specifically to science and, and the level of sophistication and the need of those teachers and quite honestly, the need of students to be able to take part in labs. And so very similar to the CTC, we know that there's no substitution for the hands-on experience. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. McCausland to talk a little bit about some protocols we recently developed and, and sent out to schools, to high schools for, for science labs. But we also would like to, to consider if we're not reaching the hybrid as soon as we thought about bringing those students in for science labs. Ms. McCausland?
Sure. So I've been working with Mr. Peters, who is our secondary science supervisor. And, and he's done, he's done a fabulous job with working with the spokes at MSD along with teachers and administrators around the county to develop protocols to put into place for students and, and teachers when they return to the classroom and for labs. Mr. Peters and I were talking today that if we have the opportunity to get kids back into the lab settings, we're going to start with those AP student, AP science classes, students in those classes. And we're going to have to meet with a team of people to determine the best model that we want to use to implement. But we have a couple of different options and strategies that we can use to get those students in because the AP test does rely heavily on, on lab settings and, and students' ability to have those lab experiences. So those would be our, our, you know, number one priority in lab settings, also looking at science research.
And if there's no questions regarding that, the, the last piece that we were, we were committed to looking, looking forward with, and I know Ms. McCabe feels the way, feels the same way, as was mentioned by Ms. Herbert earlier and Mr. Wernick, you know, anything we can do to begin to look at providing opportunities for our youngest learners, early literacy, for kids to be handling books, for, for kids to be handling manipulatives in our, in our math environment. There's no substitution for it. So that would be something also that we would be very interested in. If we couldn't reach where we want to reach by the 19th, that we would be committed to looking at how it is that we can start to expand some of our, our earliest learners and, and the actual grade levels there, whether we're talking pre-K, one, two. I know that was mentioned earlier by Ms. Patagely as well. That's something that we're committed to, to really focusing on.
I would also like to just add or remind folks, we did hold an SAT administration. Eric, that was just this past weekend, right?
Yes, Dr. Locker. Yes, it was. It went, that occurred at Wintersmoor High School, yes.
Right. And so that was an opportunity afforded to our students. We also have, coming up in October, the CCPS SAT Day on Wednesday, October 14th. That's just for our students. And so we'll be offering another administration then.
I heard, I think, at the secondary level, ESOL or ELL. Are we doing anything with our ELL students at the elementary and middle levels? And also, I was wondering about the Title I students.
So I'll start, I'll start with our ELL. So, so basically, right now, they are resourced. And so because of their not having a, a school or a class, they've been providing services virtually. That's certainly something that we can consider also doing by bringing in some smaller groups of our ESOL students, specifically to Title I. I mean, I can go ahead and tell you that right now, we are continuing to try to meet some of the financial or fiscal responsibilities that we have for those schools and making sure that schools are able to utilize funds that, the way that we have it in the plan. But there haven't been, to my knowledge, Mr. Wernick, you may be able to speak specifically to the schools, but we're not necessarily bringing in schools, I mean, students at that time, at this time.
Correct. But they are doing virtual blade groups as they would in their schools. You know, they are also doing virtual parent sessions. You know, they have done some drive-up sessions where they've given materials out to their students for Title I schools. So they are still, you know, working on all the parameters of Title I, either virtually or as they would just passing out materials, you know, as a drive-by.
Yeah, there's been a lot of effort there on community engagement over the last several weeks. I can speak specifically to that.
Okay, and band and chorus, how are we handling those?
I'm sorry, band and chorus?
Mm-hmm. Yes, band.
So, Dr. Dorsey, just today, we went ahead and provided some protocols for our arts as well as physical education as we prepare for hybrid. I can go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Gruss, who is our content supervisor for the arts. Maybe she can provide some additional insight.
Good evening, everyone. How's everybody?
Good.
Happy to be here. Thank you. We did put out some protocols and general guidelines for our return in a hybrid situation with fine arts. In terms of instrumental music and vocal, we have guidelines that will, you know, maintain social distancing, make sure that we're doing appropriate cleaning, make sure that we can still offer these opportunities for kids because it's very important that the kids have these, these opportunities. We're trying to create spaces that are still protected, yet are still productive. So, you know, there's lots of information in these documents that I'm sure have been shared with you or will be shared with you. So, but we have those protocols in place. Teachers are aware and the safety of the kids are definitely a forefront. And we're going to keep these programs going and thriving like they have been.
And Dr. Dorsey, I can speak to, specifically to a teacher I've visited, her room at Mount Airy Middle. And so it may not look the same way with our course or, you know, or our music classes, but to the best of our ability, we're providing those experiences for students.
Absolutely.
And I want to say that I've seen this in action. My granddaughter's in sixth grade and I want to do a shout out to Mr. Peters because I will go from her classroom in our office to the, I would call it the blue room, the family room with the other granddaughter. And I walked in one day and there is Abigail standing up in front of her computer, clapping to the right and clapping to the left. And he had them going. So, and it was amazing. I was like, how do you teach this? But I'm telling you, I have to give a shout out to that young man.
And if I may say, I taught that young man in elementary school.
Page right out of your book, Ms. Herbert.
I've taught a few too.
I wanted to say also, Mr. Jones at North Care Middle has been doing phenomenal. My son's in instrumental music for seventh grade. So doing the virtual, yeah, it's, it's not ideal, but he's learning, you know, the teacher and the students are learning how to, okay, let's pair this up, let's pair that up, let's listen to this beat, let's, you know, listen to this tone. So they're, they are trying, you know, working with what we have at this point, you know?
Oh, sorry. If I may say, I think that our fine arts teachers have done an absolutely outstanding job. They have worked tirelessly to come up with creative situations and ways. And they are a creative group of people. And so that this kind of instruction can continue. And I believe we've hit our stride with it.
Yep, absolutely amazing. They are, they are amazing.
I'd like to also thank Mr. Carl Stewart also for his, his efforts and, and assisting with the protocols and working with our directors, just really having a plan ready for our students once we get them back out on the field. Obviously, through band and those types of things. So thank you very much, Ms. Gruss.
Yes, his expertise has been outstanding. Thank you so much.
So, President Savigny, those are a few ideas that we, we have been working on. And we have been given the green light by Dr. Locker to get, get it baked and get it ready. And so we plan to continue to move forward, no matter what the environment may, may be.
And Mr. Anderson, what about Gateway?
Yeah, well, I can, I can't share much about that, but I can certainly turn it over to Ms. McCabe or Mr. Streaker.
Yes. So we've been working with Mr. Wetzel to get Gateway back open. And we are on track to do that for next week. And Mr. Streaker, if you're on, I'll let you talk a little bit about the process in getting that done.
Sure. Mr. Wetzel and his team have worked really hard to get, get things set up for Gateway. They're looking at opening next week. We have 25 students in each cohort at Gateway. So 25 for Cohort A and 25 for Cohort B. And then the middle school level, we have three students in one cohort and one in the other. So, you know, that, we always have smaller numbers historically in Gateway in the beginning of the year, particularly given the pandemic and the school closures since March. But we're, we're excited to get things, get things moving forward at Gateway and Crossroads Middle. Transportation has worked really, really well with us. And, and the coordination between the transportation to Gateway, as long as our special programs, Mr. Shockney and I have worked with Mr. Hardisty and his team to make sure the transportation is in place as well.
Do we have any social distancing issues with Gateway? I mean, would they be able to come back in full?
The challenge with that is the fluctuating enrollment of Gateway, President Savigny. So at that current time, we feel, we feel like we need to start with the enrollment. And it's, and it's not just the occupancy of Gateway, it's also the transportation piece. So the buses are shared and I'll, I guess, Mr. Hardisty, if I mess up, you can correct me. But the conversations I've had with him are quite extensive, that the, the buses are shared between Gateway and our special, special education programs. So if we were to try to open on all days, A and B, we would be overcrowding our buses. So we decided that we would need to start where we are now, running the same cohort model on an A group and a B group.
And I see what you're saying about how they fluctuate, but right now, per the information we were given early, it, it is only about half their kids opted to be in hybrid. But like you say, that could change in two weeks. But I was surprised that their, their younger kids seemed like, more of them were going, but the, the older kids, it seemed like they didn't opt to go. Did you see that?
I would have to check with Mr. Wetzel about that. The information, they can share with me, we have 25 students attending in Cohort A and 25 in B. I don't know what percentage of them are attending in person or if that's different than those numbers.
We'll be looking at the alternative.
We'll be looking at the alternative intention form changes a little bit later, but there wasn't a lot of, there wasn't a lot of change in, in what parents were opting for their students.
So, President Savigny, just to finish up on some of that, you know, we're seeing a lot of success as Mr. Shockney and Ms. McCollum has said, it's a tremendous amount of work for our teachers and our assistants, but we are seeing some success. We're winning small, we're winning often, and hopefully we can continue to grow this.
And I'm so glad that you've given everyone this information tonight, so that people in the community know, and parents, that we are up and running in a lot of areas, and that we do have students coming in and out of the schools. And, and we've had incidents, but we have been taking care of that, and we're trying to keep our students safe and our faculty safe, and things are running well.
Thank you.
We were getting ready to segue a little while ago into, you know, how we're starting to communicate. We've had a lot of talk about sort of making sure people understand not only the programs and things that we're doing, but also what looks different about our buildings? What can parents expect when they send their kids? What are some of those logistics? You've heard Mr. O'Neill talk about all the different protocols for cleaning and disinfecting and that sort of thing, but really, you know, hearing from our schools, and we've been working really hard at getting messages out. Dr. Dorsey referenced, she had sat in on a town hall or a
Northwest Middle?
Coffee chat at Northwest Middle, where they went through some of that. I've seen lots of examples of videos that schools have put together to Q and A documents, and I asked Ms. McCabe and the directors to share just a little bit, and opportunity for board members to ask some questions about that.
Yes, so as you can imagine, our parents and students have been excited about the start of the school year, and then the plan to switch to hybrid at some point. And so our administrators have been doing a great job answering those questions that are coming into the schools and into us, so that, so that parents and students can be prepared. One of the things that we've been working on is a question-answer sheet or an FAQ that will be going out either later this week or early next week. That will be going out from each school, and it will also be posted on our website. As Dr. Locker said, our principals have been doing a great job communicating with our families through presentations, through videos, et cetera, and they've been answering a lot of those questions that come up. So with that, I'll turn it over to the school-based directors to talk a little bit about the ways that their principals have been communicating and what they've been communicating about. What have been the hot topics? So who'd like to go first?
I can go first, Mrs. McCabe, thank you. So as Mr. McCabe said, there's been a lot of communication that's gone out, and what we've tried to focus on is answering the questions that we believe that the parents have. And a lot of the things have been logistics. Some of the messages that principals have started talked about literally what will the classroom look like? Some are providing pictures of chairs that are six foot apart. Then they go through class changes, the fact that you're going to wear a mask. Some are producing videos, talking about drop-off. So they're almost going from the beginning of the day till the end of the day. There have been some changes that Mr. Hardisty has worked with us on that, for bus drop-off, there's specific places for parent pickup and drop-off, because we expect an increase in that. So we're trying to lay out everything that's going to happen during the school day that could be new and different. And then, of course, for freshmen at the high school level, trying to, you know, we did those things this summer to really introduce them to what high school looked like under normal circumstances. So from individual seats in the cafeteria at some of the schools, to reminding that there's six-foot apart stickers on the hallway floors, and things like washing their hands and hand sanitizer. So I think with the vast amount of things that are sent out, the parents should be able to get just about any question answered, and then many of the principals are going to offer a chat and chew, as Dr. Locker talked about, a virtual town hall, different settings so that the parents can have specific questions answered that are, that are on their mind.
At the middle school level, one of the things that we've been working on is really getting that transition piece in place. You know, after the logistics of looking at the building, how will the hybrid model work? One of the first things that our principals did, you know, we meet twice a week, is to set up the school so that we've divided the population with the idea of everybody attending. So that if somebody does switch from virtual to hybrid, we know our class size is going to be okay. And that took a great deal of work. Sharing all of that information with the parents through, as Mr. King said, all of the chat and chews, the virtual meetings, the video presentations, the online tours. We've also got some activities coming up and some things that they want to do as we get closer to hybrid. We want to invite our sixth graders to be able to come in and actually see the physical plan of the building with a very small, individualized tour, because while sixth and seventh graders may know the building, one of the greatest pieces of transition is when you walk in that building to feel comfortable. You know, I always said that you know where your homeroom is the first day. So they're doing all of those things, and if you get a chance to see some of them or be in there, the creativity and the energy is something that middle school principals have really worked very hard to create, so that when you walk into your building on the first day in hybrid, you know it's a positive place that welcomes you to be there. So we've been hitting all of those things and making sure the building is socially distanced and ready to meet all of the requirements that we have before we start.
Similar at the elementary level, you know, again, there's Twitter and the videos, a lot of newsletters going out and mass communication, just to ensure that our families are comfortable. You know, some of the, you know, concerns that we're sharing are, you know, the safety measures. What does that look like? Because that's new for many of our students. You know, wearing a mask, traveling down the hallway, following, you know, some of the arrows and the stickers, and where to stand. What does the classroom look like? You know, a little different. It's going to look different than it does in a traditional setting, maybe a little less desks, may not have, you know, certain tables that they're accustomed to. So explaining that, you know, what is lunch going to look like and recess? You know, the hallways, bathroom breaks, you know, arrival and dismissal, when you're getting on the bus and off the bus, you know, the social distancing that you need. You know, there's been some great videos that some of the principals have done, you know, with staff and their assistant principals, of just kind of breaking all that down, sharing it with parents and with their students, so that they are ready for school whenever we begin, you know, in that hybrid setting.
What about kindergarten orientation? I heard about sixth grade and how they're transitioning to the middle school level. Are we doing anything special for the kindergartners?
Absolutely. You know, as principal groups, we talked to them and said that, yes, they can have small groups come in, you know, if they choose to, to have the tour of the school, as well as they're doing those virtual tours that are being sent home for our first students as well.
Thank you, directors. Any other questions about those communications that are going out before we get into the changes to answers from the parents as far as their intent to send their students back?
Can I ask a very targeted question? Sorry. Can I ask a very targeted question about elementary schools? I've gotten a lot of emails from parents asking about masks and mask breaks for the smaller, the youngest of our learners. You know, that they're concerned about, like their, their choice to send their kids back in a hybrid depends on whether they think their kids are going to get some breaks from the masks, and, and they're trying to understand, you know, is my kid literally going to be, you know, sitting at a desk in a room the entire day? And I know that we've, we've talked about how, no, kids are, we've, we've figured out how to get better movement around the elementary schools. They will be doing PE in the gyms, they will be doing at least half the time, you know, lunch in the cafeterias. So that we've kind of eased some of that, but they're also wondering about masks, and do we have a plan for that? You know, is there, is there going to be like a 10-minute mask break every hour or so, or something like that?
Yes, so, you know, when they're outside for PE at recess, they are able to take their masks off if they're socially distanced. And what we've also stressed, you know, at our meetings, is that teachers are sharing, you know, allowing students some time to go outside, you know, just to take their masks off, to socially distance. It may be that they're doing an activity outside, a learning activity, where they're socially distanced and able to take their masks off. So they're trying to build instruction into either going outside or providing that time so students, you know, aren't sitting the entire day with their masks on in the classroom. But again, recess, the, anytime PE, or anytime they're outside and socially distanced, they're able to remove their masks.
Yeah, in fact, I just saw, I think it was a communication from Mechanicsville Elementary School today, and they did a really nice job of explaining, there'll be opportunities for that kind of mask break, and here's what it would look like, and we'd be social distanced. And so I know as an elementary parent, you know, I'd be encouraged to be able to see how that's laid out.
And we know that we're going to have some students that require more mask breaks than other students, just like any other accommodation that we might need to make for students in our schools. So we're really looking at this as, as just another thing that we deal with, and we're going to help our students get through it and support them through it, and give them breaks and reminders, and, you know, it's probably going to be that they, they do better with the masks than the adults do. We'll see.
Thank you, Ms. McCabe. Do you want to, did you have, did you say you had one other follow-up topic you were getting into there?
Yes. Yes, in your folders, you received a stapled packet of charts. The first one is green. This just goes over the data that we collected on the parent intention form about what parents were choosing. Were they, were they going to send their students back? Were they going to choose virtual, et cetera? And so what we did is, after the last board meeting, each principal sent an email out to their family that basically said, "We're planning to start virtual on October 19th. This is what we have down for you as far as your choice for your students go." And then it said, "Cohort A, Cohort B, or virtual." And then if any parent had a concern about that or had changed their mind, they just called the school and let them know. The school then updated the data in our, in our programs. And so we pulled the data today at noon to look at what changes have we seen since parents had to make their decision about whether they were going to send their, their students in. So all in all, about 30% of our student body is going to be virtual. That's about 8,000 students. And then overall, only about, well, I'll put it this way, over 82% of our parents remained steady with the choice they made. So, you know, if it was virtual, they stayed with virtual. If it was in-person, they stayed with in-person. So really, not many people changed their minds about what they were going to do with their children during hybrid. And if you would, after the charts, there are graphs, nearer to the back of the packet. There are graphs for elementary, middle, and then high. And those graphs show basically what the intention form responses looked like the beginning and what they look like now. So you can take a look at that and see that the great majority of folks stuck with their original decisions. And this is just information that you had asked us to collect for you for this meeting.
And it looks like the responses got better as it got more real, and, and I guess you guys maybe aren't surprised, it seems like there were a few schools that really had a lot of no responses. Now, maybe that's not surprising to you which ones they were based on the student population, but, and then some of them went from a lot, a lot, like Glinton Springs went from a lot of no responses to almost none. I mean, that's amazing.
And there were a lot of, a lot of communication in here that we really can't see just by looking at these charts and graphs. There were a lot of phone calls that were made from parents to the school and, and from the school to parents to talk through a lot of questions, a lot of concerns that parents had. And so, you know, that's what you see in here, too, reflected in here, is, you know, is parents feeling a little more comfortable making their decision about whether they wanted their child to remain virtual or come into the building?
And I think it's really important, too, is, you know, for everyone, the public, our staff, you know, everyone understands is, parents deserve to definitely have a choice in this. You know, parents are essentially the expert of their own child, so they know what works for their child and what does not. You know, many emails we saw was a parent saying, "My child is doing very well in this class virtually, but not well in this class virtually." And I think I even brought that up, you know, last week, that, yeah, like some classes, math and science, those type of things you need hands-on. You know, in English class might be a little different, public speaking a little different, but, you know, that's what we're hearing from lots and lots of parents, and I saw that this weekend. So I, you know, I just want to make sure that the public knows, we are paying attention, we are listening, we did listen to the survey from parents, you know, and parents and students should have a choice in this, and they need to understand that, you know, yeah, we are trying to work with that to put our kids and our families first. Yes, we know virtual is working right now. It was supposed to be temporary to begin with, it wasn't supposed to be long-term. And our teachers are doing phenomenal. But yeah, we do need to, you know, we need to definitely listen to our parents and our students and what they want.
Any questions? My first.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. So, board members, the last agenda item here is athletics update. Now, if you remember at our last meeting, last Wednesday, we had kind of a, just a general conversation about, you know, the board's interest in what our, what our potential options for athletics would be, and the very next day, we were presented with new options. And so I think it's important that we have some conversation around this. Mr. Duffy is here to give us an overview of what has changed since we last met, and then I think it's important that we affirm what the, what the board's intent is, and I know we all probably have some input and things we want to add to that. So we'll start with the overview and go from there. Michael?
Thank you, Dr. Locker. Good evening, board members. Hope everyone is still wide awake and excited to keep on talking. I will try to be as brief as possible.
You bet.
As you, as we talked just last week, we talked about the potential of the MPSSAA making, moving up the two semester date from February 1. I was not aware that it was going to move up from February 1 to potentially next week, but just, I want to first give you a little bit of an update of where we are right now. We had planned, we had worked to design our two semester plan in conjunction with the way that the MPSSAA and the state of Maryland, all the other local school systems had designed. The two semester plan involved the abbreviated seasons in the second semester and left a lot of flexibility up to each local school system in the first semester. What we designed ours to do was work within pods of no more than 20 students, and breaking it into the first week being, excuse me, the first season, fall sports, which began on the 14th of September, to be composed of two weeks of conditioning, which just completed last weekend, or last week, and followed by one week of sport skills, which has, still working within pods, and students are working, sharing equipment, but still maintaining social distancing. That'll be, that is this week. Next week, and for the two weeks beyond that. So for a three-week period, they will do do competitive activities within the pods, which will be sharing equipment as well as sharing the space. Everybody still following me so far?
Yes.
Awesome. After we have completed that period of time, beginning on October 26, we will move into a one-week period of conditioning for spring sports, followed by one week of sports skills, the same idea, continuing to work in the pods, continuing, then the one week of sports skills, working in the pods with shared equipment but socially distanced, and then three-week period of shared equipment and shared space. After that, we will follow the exact same plan of five weeks, beginning on December 7, accepting the final week before winter break and all of winter break. So there'll be a two-week lag in there, but, but spending that five-week period until, into January, doing that with winter sports. That, that is our plan, which we are currently executing, which has been approved through Mr. Singer's office. And I believe you all received copies of that. Am I correct with that as well?
Yes, it's in their packets.
Okay, awesome. It, it's, it's always exciting when I get things right. So I'm, I'm happy about that. It's also rare, but so I'll, I'll take it for what it is. So that has been our plan thus far.
Can you just say, where, where is that in our packets?
It's in here.
Hold on a sec. Michael, just one sec. There's the...
It's the one that says endorsed by Ed Singer, and then there's one that says not endorsed by Ed Singer. It's in the very back of the packet.
Okay, got it. Thank you. I knew where they were.
So as I said, that has been our two semester plan, which we had been working on from the summertime into, and we have submitted and been approved. When Dr. Salmon and Governor Hogan had their press conference in Frederick County last week, that obviously threw a wrench into many school systems' plans and offered up the alternative of allowing school systems to begin as early as October 7, beginning with a fall season, running through December, followed by a winter season running into, into late February, and with a culminating activity period into March, and then a more traditional spring season, beginning March into June. And what that announcement allowed was for school syst, for local school systems to make the decision of whether to go into that timeframe of period, or that timeframe of seasons, meaning the fall, during the fall period, the winter beginning in December, and then the spring beginning in March. Or continuing with the two semester plan, which would have people beginning in February with winter sports, followed by March, April, and spring sports, and April, May, and, or, excuse me, winter then fall, then April, May would be, beginning in April, May would be then spring sports. Everybody following me still?
Yes.
Okay.
That schedule's not in any of the paperwork, right?
I don't believe we provided that to you. I'll be happy to email it to all of you. It's also available on, on the MPSSA website, but I will send that to you all this evening when we finish.
I've seen it. I just, I was trying to compare.
Absolutely. Well, one is, one is extended, it's the springtime, the two semester plan, as the schedule is currently laid out, allows for, as I, as I referenced last week, allows for five weeks of activity, three weeks of preparation before, five weeks of competition. It does currently have overlap periods of two weeks between the seasons. So while the fall season is in, in tryouts for those first two weeks, those are the final two weeks of the winter season. We discussed that last week, as far as volleyball, basketball, and wrestling all taking place in the same facility at the same time, which seemed like a mess. So that, so those are kind of the two options of, of what we have right now. There has been talk and, and encouragement to try and move up the February date, but there isn't, there currently is not movement on that. So I can't really tell you that that is a viable alternative at this time. Where, so where we are left is with beginning the fall season as early as next Wednesday, it doesn't need to be. And then, and then, or beginning with the winter season in February at this time. Couple of things that I would like to share with you, and I believe, and we did submit a plan for beginning the fall next season to Mr. Singer's office, and I believe you have that in front of you, which is the one that says not approved. And there are some, and I also have both, one of our athletic directors, Mr. Malloy at Westminster, as well as one of our principals, Mr. Booze from Century, who I'm certain will be able to fill in some gaps that I miss on concerns or obstacles that we would face if we were to move forward with the fall season as proposed by Dr. Salmon and Governor Hogan last week. While, and, and I just want to be, as we've said a few ti, or I've heard a few times this evening, as transparent as possible with everyone. I don't want to hide anything, gloss over, or be overly positive or overly negative. I just want to provide to you as clear and honest a picture as I'm able. Our schedules will be set. Our plan is to work our schedules within Carroll County, that we are not planning to be competing outside of Carroll County. So I said, as I said, our schedules will be set, and our ADs are hardworking and diligent and going to do everything, they would do everything within their power. But I think we would need to come to the understanding that there's a strong likelihood that schedules will not all be equal. If there were an outbreak among one team or one school, that would obviously complicate scheduling. So while they would do everything in their power to maintain schedules, to tell people unequivocally that we're going to be the same, that, that Westminster will play seven games, or will play six games, and Winter's Mill will play six games, that's possible that that would not take place in that manner, simply because we can't guarantee what modifications we would need to make due to any outbreaks or quarantines or something similar. Everyone still good? We also, we, at this point in time, Allegheny and Garrett County are the only two school systems who have opted into the early year-long plan. Everyone else is planning for the two semester plan. Who has, I, I can't say everyone is planning. Everyone who has weighed in, and I believe that's about, I counted this afternoon, 12 to 13 other jurisdictions have weighed in and said they are expecting to be participating in the two semester plan. Since we're not playing other people that are other school systems, that doesn't really factor in. But just to be aware, we would be playing a separate schedule than the majority of the state of Maryland. So that is something that would be different.
If I could ask a question on that?
By all means, sir.
Yeah. You're talking, you said you're going to play just schools in the county. Were that just the public schools, or are you looking to play private schools as well to increase your schedule a little bit?
We honestly haven't, we have not ruled out any private schools at this time. We, we have not made that decision. Our plan is to not leave Carroll County.
Right. But I, I was saying, if you could get more competition, there's a couple of private schools in the area, and they're still within the county. That's about it.
Yes. And that, that has been on the table.
Okay.
We, we have not designed a schedule, we have not finalized a schedule because we don't know where we're going to wind up yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. One of the factors that, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Whichever schedule it ends up being, or, or maybe a modified, there's, this year, there's going to be no postseason play for anybody?
That's not necessarily so. What the MPSSA is asking school systems and sports committees to, in, in encourage and involve is equitable postseason, or equitable culminating activities. I don't know what that's going to be called, quite honestly. I, I wish I could tell you, but it, it would be very difficult to, the difficulty is when there's two separate options that, you know, we could have, for example, if, if we were to go the long-year route, we could have three school systems playing on, on one schedule and 21 school systems playing on a different schedule. That, obviously, there's not an equitable, there's not equity there. So what it is called for is, allows for culminating activities, which could include a Carroll County larger tournament in addition to a regular season, as one example. There's a lot of, there's a lot of possibilities. But as we talk about other issues, that October 27th, under this calendar, would be the first available play date. That following weekend, I believe at 2:00 AM on Sunday, November 1, becomes daylight saving time, or it ends daylight saving time, which is going to significantly impact both practice and game schedules. It doesn't, doesn't necessarily impact, obviously, anything that takes place in the gym. Doesn't really impact much with, much of games that would take place in the stadium field. It would greatly impact practice schedules and would certainly impact sports such as, obviously, cross-country, making sure that those races are finished, and field hockey, because we don't play field hockey on a lighted field. So that would, it would be nearly impossible to play a junior varsity and a varsity field hockey game on the same day at the same location, knowing that the sunlight is going to go down. Because I believe, someone looked it up for me on that Sunday, I believe sundown is about 5:05 PM. So that's, that will present an issue. Other concerns we would have would be locker rooms and the cleaning, and they are germ factories in a normal year. The amount of things that are going to then therefore be an issue during COVID, I think are multiplied. We also would have the issue, especially in a hybrid mode, as well as in a virtual, students getting transportation to practices when they're not at the school. It's one thing for students to stay after school, it's another thing for students who aren't able to get to the school each and every day, especially our younger students, ninth and 10th graders, whose parents may both work full-time. Obviously, we would want to be discouraging students from carpooling to prevent infections between them, but that, that's certainly going to be an issue. Spectators, the, the Maryland Department of Health actually lifted, didn't lift, relaxed that standard last week to allow for up to, for our purposes, 100 spectators, not, not individuals, but spectators within our gyms, and 250 spectators in our stadium, in our stadium. And the other issue that this is going to, obviously, is going to impact us is, because of the limited spectators, our athletic programs are funded primarily through gate receipts, which are going to be significantly impacted. The budgets are going to hurt, no matter when that happens, just to be bluntly honest with you all. This, both of these opportunities provide, it the earlier opportunity starting sooner does obviously unjam the second semester. It doesn't, there's not as much, there's more time within the seasons, there's more time for competition, there's more time for preparation, there's more time for rescheduling. There's not the overlap. That, that's obviously a bonus. Both, both schedules offer kids an opportunity, offer our students an opportunity to be participating sooner, or be participating within the schools. The one thing I neglected to add, and I apologize, is with our current plan that has been approved, that Phase 2 and Phase 3, it also involves approval for extracurricular activities that can now begin as well, including bringing students in for, for marching band, for example, for, for robotics, for SGA, and, and other clubs. So that, that is, that is now part of our approved plan as well. At this point, I would love for either Mr. Malloy or Mr. Booze to fill in on things that I've missed. And then I'll be glad to take as many questions as you have. Mr. Malloy, would you like to go first?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Booze. Well, hello to the board members and Dr. Lockard. I'm a huge proponent of athletics, as everybody knows, but I really believe you're going to have to look at your benefits versus your risks of not only what we decide as a timeline to choose for athletes to be involved, but there are some other parameters. Michael mentions budget, number one. Yeah, we can clean buildings, but we still have to clean equipment, we still have to clean balls. The budget to supply all the items, we need to do those things. That's just a separate entity. I probably wouldn't be pushing for athletics if I hadn't spent the bulk of my summer helping to design the return to play and what we call, affectionately call, organized team activities for our kids. And so that's where we are. I'm absolutely a proponent for it, but I believe we have to have caution as we look at this. And it's, one of my largest concerns is the choice that will fall on you all to decide if we're going to go with the early option or the second semester option. If we go with the early option, and by some act of God, the MPSSA says during the second semester, well, we're going to, we're going to go with state championships now because we're going to play our fall, winter, spring during the second semester. That, in essence, makes us ineligible to play in those state championships.
And I'll tell you one thing right now, excuse me, sir, but I will be jumping up and down if they've changed, if they change the rules in the middle of the year. I will tell you that right now, and they'll know who I am, because that's not right. And Terry, you know who I am.
I don't disagree at all. But with offering two options, I mean, we do have a legit, legitimate argument to say, we went with one of the options that you proposed to us. So, and that's more in Michael's court, where he's really got to hammer that kind of stuff out with the MPSSA. A couple of housekeeping items we really need to look at, whether we're hybrid, whether we're all in school, all virtual, what are we doing with attendance eligibility when we involve Google classrooms? This takes it totally out of the equation. You could have a kid on a Friday night, and again, don't get me wrong, I want my kids playing. If a kid plays in a Friday night football game, he could log into all his Google classrooms before midnight that night, and he's been to school that day. That's how I understand the rule. Is that correct? Mr. Booze is nodding. So, basically, we basically take the attendance eligibility factor out of the equation, which is very difficult. For years, kids have missed games and practices simply because they were late to homeroom, they didn't, weren't in their school building for 50% or more of the day. That's something that, the ownership doesn't come down to me as an athletic director, it really comes down to my administration and people that are technically higher up the food chain than they are. So that's another thing. We, I heard you all talking earlier about space and how you coordinate space in your buildings. One of the very specific things about our return to play, conditioning and sports-specific activities, were that we designed emergency action plans for our athletic trainers and our coaches, that when we have weather events, we all have lightning detectors and storm detectors, and they're all attached to our smartphones, et cetera, et cetera. We have to have very large indoor spaces to, for the safety of our kids to bring them indoors. And we can't bring them to locker rooms. We can't bring them to weight rooms. We can't bring them to auditoriums or classrooms where there's hardware that then have to be additionally disinfected. They've got to go into large venue areas. And if, you've been in a lot of the high schools, Westminster has cornered the market on that. I've got massive lobbies, I've got large gymnasiums, two gymnasiums. Some of the other schools aren't set up that way. So that's a concern you, I think you have to take into account. One other housekeeping item is the fact that currently volunteer coaches are not allowed to be alone with student athletes. They may work under the direction of a paid head coach who's a Carroll County employee. They're all Carroll County employees. They're just forbidden to be alone with those, those student athletes. If you have a head paid coach who has a volunteer assistant working with their, his or her program, who is exposed or tests positive and, and has to be removed or quarantined or miss the remainder of the season, are we going to be, we, are you going to be willing to say, we can now put that volunteer coach in that type of position to be supervising and in charge of, of those kids? So those are just housekeeping items. The budgetary thing, I don't think we have an answer for. 250 people in my stadium for a Friday night football game versus 2,000, which is 50%, they tell you, you have to use which number is smaller, will basically pay for the field paint for me to host two football games. And the pandemic is something, is not something we could have planned for budgetarily, because we didn't see it coming. We live year to year on gate receipts. So that's kind of where I see it. Again, I don't mean to give you a lot of negatives. I am all for this. We have schedules designed. We know there's going to be anomalies and it, an outbreak to, the way the athletic directors, I believe, in this county look at it, is that if we had an outbreak or something to deal with, to us, to us, that's no different than a, a weather decision we need to make in terms of how we're going to play or make up games. That's manipulable. So, Mr. Booze, do you have anything to add?
I always have something to add. Thank you all for having me here, and it could be the last time I'm invited, who knows. For, for those of you, you know, who don't know, I mean, my first 11 years of my career, I, I coached lacrosse, and coaching and extracurricular activities were what I did, and I absolutely loved it. As an administrator, I think it's the best part of, of the job, getting to see high school students engaged in extracurricular activities. The importance of, of having kids involved in something is, is just awesome. Being able to go and see kids excel or gel as a team is amazing. Seeing kids play and perform, it's just, it's the best part of the job. It really is. That being said, you know, all due respect, my life and, and stress level are at, at points I've never, ever imagined they could be. You know, taking what the governor and Dr. Salmon have put out, taking the direction and changes that we've had to go through from the direction of the board and our leadership, it's been brutal. We, we change on a dime, we change without much notice, and the operation of any public school... And the operation of any public school, selfishly, public high schools is you really truly don't understand all that goes into it until you're sitting there. And for the last few months, to be told on a weekly basis, here's this new thing that we're gonna do or here's this new bit of information and public check with your principal. I totally accept that and I own that, but it's demanding, it's exhausting. Throughout this meeting, I've answered parent emails and text messages and I've gotten text messages from former coaches that I've coached with and coaches from my school. So it's nonstop. So when I look at the challenges that we have, just for my school specifically, just so that there's nothing left or nothing we forget about. For a typical fall season, we have cheerleading, boys cross country, girls cross country, field hockey, football, boys soccer, girls soccer, volleyball and golf as our athletic programs. Typically, at Century High School, we could have between 275 to 350 kids, depending on the size of the program and the JVs involved. Then you throw out the marching band, the color guard, the drama program. At Century, we have JRTC programs from South Carroll, Century and Liberty. And then at Winters Mill, they have their JRTC program too. Both schools offer a strike force and a raider team. And then there's all our clubs. So to have all of the changes that we're responsible for and all of the things that have been a traditional way of life and just smooth operation in public schools from when I was a teacher to when I was a kid to when many of you were teachers to some of you who taught many, 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 many years ago. Just saying, but our way of life, everything's different. Every transition and building logistic is not the same as it ever was and it's not what it was March 10th of last year. We're totally different. To add the layer of athletics, like Mr. Malloy and Mr. Duffy have been saying, we need to think about every transition. The fact that our kids are in cohorts, does that get wiped out at 2:30 in the afternoon when athletics start? Can kids that are in B cohorts come on Monday and Tuesday and mingle with their teammates? Can, do kids hang out after school? We have places in the building, we have places outside of the building. And quite frankly, we don't have enough staffing to cover it all. Not all of our teachers are willing to be coaches. Not all of our teachers are willing to cover these areas. Just the amount of supervision and making sure that everybody is safe and in the proper place is quite daunting. And the fact that, you know, when something goes wrong or when somebody is not where they're supposed to be, I'll be the one and my colleagues around the county will be the ones that parents or teachers or kids or whoever come to to say, this didn't happen right, fix it. And then Mr. Malloy also brought up the other point that's a huge concern for me is academics and attendance. That has been a standard. If you're a student athlete or a student involved in extracurricular activities, you are held to a higher standard because it's a privilege and you need to do well and you need to be in your classes. Is that gonna be in place? We don't know. And to think about starting next week with all the other things we don't know, it's, in my opinion, it's too much. I think we need time. I think we need to do it right. Please don't take this as a, we don't want it to happen because I said it earlier. It's the best thing about this job. And right now, I would love to see students, you know, in some form of extracurricular activity. But there is so much that has to be put in place. There's so little time and we're still making massive changes. And it is just overwhelming to say the least.
How many of these students are possibly in rec programs?
Thank you, Mr. Booze.
How many of these students are possibly in rec programs right now?
That's really the hard, it's really difficult for us to even estimate that. We don't have any attachment to those rec and travel and club teams. Do a lot of our kids play them? Absolutely. But some kids are pigeonholed in programs where they don't have that opportunity. There's, they could play AAU basketball all summer. There's no AAU football. You know, Carroll County is a hotbed for lacrosse. The majority of our lax kids are playing on clubs or high level travel teams. So it's really, really hard. That's a apples orange question to me. And I've been doing the job for almost 20 years. I got a pretty good pulse on that, but it's still, it's a guess.
So is there a way to look at how, again, you know, comparing, you know, how can high school sports make it work if rec councils are making it work?
I think that's a, that's a great question, Ms. Taglia. I don't know the answer on what the rec councils have done. What I, my one concern is that I, is that I know Mr. Singer has not approved the plan as we have submitted it for. Ms. Coons, can you shed some light on that perhaps?
Sure. You've all seen Ed Letter, I think, I assume. And his, his main point, you all have made several, some, some great points as well. His main point was he is not comfortable with the idea of moving forward with the same start date, that early start date in October because he feels like the focus needs to be on starting the academic year and seeing how that goes. And as we know, no matter when anything opens, there's a bump in cases and clusters. And so his, his main concern from our perspective at the health department is that we will see just too, too many clusters happening at the same time. And that it would be better to at least postpone for a few weeks and see how school opening goes before trying to start an athletic program. And having, again, as you mentioned, the cohorts mixing and students, you know, having other, other interactions on top of that. And then that's just kind of going to ripple back out to schools as well with people being impacted by, by cases and quarantines.
So I guess that's what I'm trying to understand because you had that already in rec programs. You have a rec program that's in one area and those kids come from different areas in the county and play that team. They also are crossing state lines to play different games. So I guess that's when, you know, when I hear from a parent and says, hey, my kid needs to get out in the field. They're currently playing football, but they need to get back into high school football. You know, I sit there and I'm like, okay, you're saying about when they cross cohorts. Well, they're already doing that when they're crossing different towns. They're seeing different people. They're crossing state lines. So, and I'll admit, I'm sorry, but sports is important to a lot of these kids. You know, we keep taking away from them, taking away from them. You got kids getting, that are filling up college applications. It's getting harder for them to look at their future a little bit brighter right now. You know, it's a lot of doom and gloom, unfortunately. And it's like, we need some type of bright spot to get some of these kids going back into everything that they love. And if rec can do it, why can't high school do it? I just, I'd like to make, continue on with that.
Teaching phys ed for over 40 years, living in a locker room every day. And I understand the cleanliness part of a girl's locker room versus a boy's locker room and the sports in the mud and the uniforms and things like that. But I wanna, when I go by a, a, four seasons that is two miles from my house and I see almost every varsity girl playing hockey there because they can't come on to one of our sports fields. And then this young man here, and I asked him today if I could read part of this and he sent us all this email today. My name is Justin Sheets. I'm a senior at Liberty High School. I'm writing to ask you to support the return of fall sports to Carroll County. I actually just returned from playing in a rec soccer league with my teammates, again, rec Winters Mill team. I'm wondering why I cannot play for Liberty High School and I'm hoping that you can change that. And that is so true. He goes on and tells me how he has got to go out of state to play in tournaments, to get videos and for better competition. And they're traveling up and down the East Coast and we can't have sports. My first thing is I do not want anything to happen that, that would, that would mess up starting our hybrid. I understand that. But I do not understand how all these rec teams are crossing lines and competing every day and not coming in with COVID cases and we can't have kids play soccer and field hockey. They can't run cross country. I don't, I just don't understand that. I know there's a lot of work in it. I understand that. I understand scheduling, the time and the cleanliness. But when you're getting information like this, I, I, I don't understand why we can't do it and everybody else around us is doing it. North of us, Pennsylvania, Virginia, and they're going out of town to do all these competitions. I don't understand why we can't open up athletics.
We certainly can open it up. You know, if, certainly if the board wishes to open up, you know, athletics and follow Dr. Salmon's guidance, we can certainly do that.
I've got a couple of questions and, and to talk about the rec, which, which I've been involved since too long. And they're traveling. I've, I've had kids, I've had kids wrestle in Utah, Nevada, Pennsylvania. And, you know, I was at a little league game Saturday. Part of this that disturbs me is the cohort stuff, but I was at a little league game Saturday and coaches wore masks, nobody else on the property, which I asked about and they told me no. But they actually, because of limited competition, the two teams lined up by size and picked teams and they split their teams up into two halves. I, 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 I agree totally with what you guys are saying. We haven't had any, any instances yet with problems. I know my son's been involved with the health department some. There were some cases in soccer. There were some cases. And the biggest hassle was people not understanding why they couldn't have the kid's name and why they didn't know more, but, but not health. But I guess my question would be, and you already addressed the daylight savings, what would happen if this guy backed up one month? We sat here earlier and I want sports to happen and I'll be honest. Wrestling will happen during the regular season. All these high school kids are already joining the rec kids. They're gonna be doing it. But my priority is October 19th. We sat here early and quibbled about a couple of little numbers on being able to open in. This is more numbers than small groups, except for career in tech maybe. This is a lot of numbers. If the health department says they don't endorse this, but they would consider it two weeks after we opened October 19th, if everything stayed healthy, that would back this schedule up about a month. Does that kill it? I, I, I just, I, and I'm gonna get calls. You said you got, Mr. Booze, you said you got emails. I'm gonna get, I'll probably have somebody at my house tonight. But I just can't put this over opening schools. But if we're not gonna open schools, then this is an easy decision for me. What the hell? Let's play sports. So what happens if we back it up a month?
Well, that question is to me and I'll assume it is. If we were to back up a month, honestly, we would lose a good portion of the fall season by trying to do the year long plan. If we were to start at the end of October, I don't think we could play golf. Number one, I'm not sure we could get spots on golf courses. Number two, sunlight's an issue. I'm not sure we'd be able to, the same thing with, we would be in daylight saving time at that point. I'm not sure we could realistically get in a full, a full semblance of a fall season. If you're asking from a purely athletic standpoint, what would we lose? That is what we would lose, the majority of the fall. And now if you ask me, is that afforded to be, give us more time to prepare and perhaps be a bit safer? I would say yes, but that's what you will need to weigh of. What is the most important component from that?
Would the health department support maybe golf or some sports that are more capable of social distancing to go ahead and start, but not some of the rest? Is that a possibility or do you feel like, like you said, I read the letter?
Yeah, yes, I believe that Ed would support, certainly golf. He doesn't mention cross country might be another option that could be more easily distanced and less competitive. So he did, he did mention some non-competitive sports would be easier to start sooner. He'd be more comfortable with that. One of the things I just want to point out really quickly while I'm speaking is that, and you alluded to this as well, one of the, we have seen some cases and one of the things I think is important to remember is that one of the greatest things about having your kid on a team, and my son plays soccer, is that they, they also socialize together. And that's, that's, that's a lot of the fun. And playing is great. They love playing, but they also love socializing and hanging out. And that's going to be extremely limited at this time. And that's where I think we are most likely to see the spread happen is when kids are sitting together on the bench or at halftime for, you know, prolonged period of time or if they're having parties for a prolonged period of time without masks, without distancing, things like that. So just another, just a little piece to keep in mind.
And I know with the rec, the benches were an issue, but the, Parks and Rec has made them all have guidelines and programs and they've been pretty good about the benches. They, they are good now. Again, I don't want to say where I was for little league, but they didn't. You know, the kids were hugging and high fiving and setting it next, you know, they were, it was a younger, it was like a middle school age group, not, because the high school kids, I've, I've found out the middle school and elementary kids, they're all over each other. The high school kids, if they're between games, all they want to do is take a nap and sit on their own. But this is tough. This is very tough for me because I do not want to jeopardize us opening school. But if, if we're not gonna pull that off, then at least we ought to get to play sports. But, but again, like I say, we sat here and quibbled about decimal points on whether or not we could open, but now we're ready to say, we don't care what Mr. Singer says. He's on vacation. We're gonna do this.
Yeah, because in, in Ed Singer's, it says, we need to focus first on reopening academic programs in a safe manner. That's his big thing. I just, these kids just need it for, I just hope we could find a happy medium.
This is just a suggestion. No way, because I support fully, like going into athletics because it's such a big part of the students' lives. If we want to open athletics as soon as possible, we could consider moving the hybrid date to the end of the first quarter, which would allow, or again, a bit of leeway because since we're like literally four weeks away from the first quarter in like mid-October for your transition, a lot of students, they've told me that they're uncertain about the spring and like what's that transition period? So it's just a suggestion. We could maybe discuss more.
Thank you, Devanchi. I know that, that's something that I've, I've thought about as we wrestle with some of the challenges associated with staffing and other things. That, that's about six hybrid days off of what October 19th currently presents.
So you're saying let's, let's schools start, not let's sports start?
Like you, Mr. Kyler, I think our focus should be on academics and getting kids in school.
I understand that.
However, I'm trying to also be realistic, understanding that it, it's not gonna be as easy as just saying everybody's coming back on October 19th as we've wrestled with all night. We know we're bringing more and more small groups back. We know that we're trying to get to that place where it's safe. I'm still, you know, I'm still concerned about being in the higher risk of transmission, according to the CDC's, but that's me. I understand Mr. Singer's concern about bringing sports and students back at the same time. So I was, you know, sort of recognizing our student representatives' point on, on that, that that would provide different times, but again, I feel like the priority is backwards.
Yeah, if, if we see a spike in numbers because of sports, then we won't open school.
Yes. We can't allow that to happen.
I'm not willing to sit in this room and say, well, we gambled and lost.
And I understand that. And I, academics is, was all this first, then, then that. And the 19th is on a Monday. And what did she, how many days did she say or what was that? So you need the end of the marking period? Idea. Idea.
The end of the first quarter. The first quarter ends November 11.
November 11. Okay, I'm looking in the wrong month.
We have a, a day off the week before that for Election Day as well. And two weeks prior would be the start.
Do you want to chime in?
Yeah, there are a couple of things popped into my head. You know, athletics has been my entire life. It's what I love to do. I want our kids playing. When people were talking about rec sports and we can't really give you answers about the numbers, but the way I view the difference between educationally-based athletics and recreational sports is, in rec sports, parents are rolling the dice. Here, CCPS is rolling the dice. So you, you, you know, you own, you make, you sleep in the bed that you make. So, and again, I want our kids playing, but we're not talking about a small group either. We're talking about going to a tournament and seeing, you know, or going with a team. I'm talking about 13 programs, 13 teams in seven different programs with 250 to 350 kids just in my fall program. All right? I want them all playing. I wouldn't, again, done all the work for return to play, but I aimed the return to play, or we aimed return to play and OTAs at the social, mental wellbeing of our student athletes and our students. Not that, our, our end game wasn't to get back to playing high school sports. That's not really how we designed it. It gave our kids something to do, some sense of normalcy. I do believe that would happen with, with athletics regardless of when you decide you want to start them. And I, after talking with some of the other ADs and Michael, if you came down and said, "Do you want, you want us to start on October 7th?" For whatever reasons that you come up with, could we make that happen in this county? Yes. Could we do it exactly the way we want? Probably not. And I'm, I think we're all a little uncertain that we could protect our kids well enough. So we don't end up having to go back and recreate the wheel if, if and when. And I often say, not when, or not if, but when we have an outbreak. So that, that's my biggest concern is how, and then how we, how we control that. So I don't want people to walk away thinking the guy at Westminster really doesn't want our kids back playing sports. It's what I live for. So that's my final take for the evening. Thank you for your time.
When you said 250 to 350, that's Westminster High School's fall sports? Your number of 250 to 350, that's Westminster's fall sports?
That is correct.
So 350 and you've only got 69% of the kids coming back to school. It's only going to be 500 kids there on a regular school day right now. So it's, and, and, and I know we've been through all the intricacies of starting hybrid. We can pull off in a couple of weeks, having 250 kids, 350 kids at Westminster High School play sports, but with seven weeks' notice, we can't start hybrid. I, I struggle with that. And again, I understand how complicated. I said this back in the spring, hybrid.
Mr. Kyler, that's assuming we have the coaches. I, I think, I think we wouldn't be able to pull it off as easily if we didn't have the, the staff. And that's what we wrestled with earlier with, with, with the rest of the student body.
Yeah. You know, no, I understand. I'm just, I, I just, like I say, as much as I love sports and, uh, and, and I do struggle, somebody mentioned that. I know a lot of wrestlers, high school wrestlers that are already practicing, but all of them can't because their families can't get them there. They're in situations where they can't join a club or do something. And I feel for them with this because we're denying them an opportunity. But like I say, we sat here in our October meeting and the numbers have spiked or the November meeting or whenever and, and we say we can't go back.
No, again, I, I hear both sides of what's being said here. And again, I guess where I land is that, you know, I don't think we should really lose the focus of the academic achievement of the students. Again, I'm all for sports as well, you know, husband, kids, grandkids, everybody played sports. And I, I just know the value of having participated on sports teams. So again, I'm not knocking that at all and I know the importance of it. And I would like to see our, our student athletes get started right away. But again, I don't think we can lose our focus on the academic piece. We have been struggling with trying to say, "How can we open in the hybrid model?" We've, we've just had a lot of situations that we've had to look at just trying to get to the point where we can get our kids back at school so we can teach them academically. So I don't think we should really lose that focus. And again, you know, I hope people don't misunderstand and think, well, you know, they're knocking sports or don't appreciate sports. That's not it at all. But I do think we have to get our kids back in the schools and, and start with the hybrid model as best we can. And again, I mean, we don't even know, and maybe I shouldn't even say this, but I'm thinking as well, going along with a later date here, we don't even know whether we'll be able to pull everything off exactly like we would want on October 19th. Again, the metrics have to be there and again, they're not totally in place at this point. So we need that metrics piece. And again, we need staff. We need to make sure that we have staff and that we're able to present our instructional programs to the students. So again, I don't think we should lose our focus of the, the academic piece.
Dr. Dorsey, I totally agree with you. Like I think one thing we need to make sure is, you know, the academic piece is the most important, getting the kids in, the ones that feel comfortable, the families that feel comfortable, giving them that choice. If they want to go in, let them go in. If they want to stay home and do virtual, let the families stay home and do virtual. Sports is important, same as any type of arts. And we, you know, we as families, we make that choice for our, you know, our families. If, you know, your kid wants to play and they're able to play, you let them play. And I think there's one thing that we need to remember is everybody has a choice in this matter. And yeah, we all sit here and we, we've been going, okay, well, this doesn't make sense. That doesn't make sense. You know, you can go to a restaurant and you can take your mask off when you're sitting at a desk or at the table, but you can't take your mask off if you're sitting at your desk at school. Or you can, you know, again, play rec sports, but you know, we want to be extremely careful with high school sports. And I think that's something that a lot of people are questioning and why a lot of people don't have a lot of understanding of why things are taking so long. And we have to make these decisions because things change constantly. I don't even know if the governor's going to have a meeting tomorrow. He probably could and tell all of us that we have to go back full-time. We never really know what he's going to do. But we have to remember too, that everybody is at a different comfort level. And if we all accept other people's feelings, I think that's something that, moving forward, we all can help each other with. And I think it's something that's really important that we all have to remember for all of our families.
And I do know that sports is very important. I've done this all my life. I know how important it's to these children. But I do not want to jeopardize the opening of school and all this hard work for the last six months, all of our, all of our employees have done. And I would hate to jeopardize that for an outbreak of COVID on a sports team. But I, I do know how important sports are. You have to have the grades to be able to be even on a sports team. And so academics does have to be first, but this is breaking my heart because these kids need to be on the field. And I understand why this, Justin Sheets wrote us. This child is, this student is telling the truth and, and how they've got to travel. And it's been a hardship on these kids trying to get into schools and, and it's not fair.
I'd like to suggest, and, and, and Ms. Sivina, you haven't said a lot. I'd like to hear from you too. But again, I'd like, we're going to meet October 7th, closed, but we're going to meet. I'd like to see what can be done if some of this had to be backed up. I haven't even, I haven't even been able to read all this and, and, and Mr. Duffy did a good presentation, but.
Yes, he did.
I need, yes, yes, but I, I'd like to look at it. I'd, I'd like to see what another week's numbers do to see if their health department can be more comfortable with it. And I know, I know a lot of people probably listening tonight and, and hearing tomorrow are very upset because if anything, the most consistent thing we've probably seen in our emails is people that want sports to start. And, and they didn't start out by telling me how, how unintelligent I was. So maybe that impressed me. And so it disappoints me, but I'd like us to look at, look at trying to do it for the year and maybe that's going to pinch fall sports a little bit. But I'd, I'd really like to see us get some more information and look at this in a week with another week's numbers behind us. And, uh, and if Mr. Singer comes back from vacation, see what we can get him to buy into.
I, I agree with that, Mr. Kyler. And Dr. Dorsey, you said it very eloquently earlier and I couldn't agree more with that academics has to be the top priority. We have to get the kids in the schools and I don't want to jeopardize October 19th for sports. Sports are very important though, and I would like to, I, I, I think it would make sense to wait the one more week, like you suggest, Mr. Kyler, and, and talk to Mr. Singer about, okay, what exactly is it that he's not endorsing about this plan? And are there any tweaks that can be made that would get him to endorse it? Like, are, are there any aspects of it that would help him get more comfortable? And if, and if waiting the extra week allows us to do that, great. But we can't jeopardize the, the hybrid opening for academics.
And again, I don't know whether we can have that discussion in a closed session. That would have to be in an open meeting. Is that correct, Dr. Lockard, as far as?
Yes. Yes, the, the close is for personnel.
Right.
So let me just say one quick thing, just to remind you that Ed's, one of his main objections obviously is that we're still watching the metrics to see if we're able to get to the, the moderate risk level, which hopefully we will. We're definitely trending in that direction. But his, one of his main concerns was really starting them at the same time. And so I, I, again, you know, as we've talked about many, many of the other issues that might impact that and make that very difficult, but I think his main concern was starting a lot of, of group activities at the same time with the same kids overlapping a lot. And, you know, and he had mentioned in his letter that he would consider, he would be more comfortable with the, more of a delayed start, which again, like I said, that brings up other, other difficulties. But I think that he would probably, you know, be consistent in that feeling that he just wouldn't want them to be starting at the same time because he's just afraid of too many clusters and outbreaks at the same time.
What are the precautions that could be put in place? Right? I mean, I, I, we just got this information. I haven't had a chance to really look through it. So.
Pulled his letter back up on my phone because I couldn't even remember what he was saying, but yes.
Are there things that could be added to the, the safety precautions that it doesn't become an issue, right? Like if there is the, the, I mean, obviously there's only so much social distancing you can do with certain sports. But, you know, up to and including, you know, if you do the temperature checks and you do additional aspects of it, is there any way to, to mitigate some of that risk that we're not? That might help on those dates?
Yeah, and, and, and I'm, I'm not blaming anybody because it's our decision. But when I hear Mr. Booze, Mr. Malloy, Mr. Duffy, not rah rah rah, "We got to start this next week" and be totally realistic about how important sports are, but how important the rest of it is. You know, I, I, I fully understand and I appreciate that.
If I can backtrack just a minute, just so I'm clear, what would you like from athletics before you all meet again?
From, from my personal side would be.
Yes, sir.
What, what if, and, and I don't want to be like we're hearing from the state, but what if, what if we did say in a week that, you know, cross-country golf, a couple of things could start, but the others either push back a couple of weeks? Or, or maybe the health department look at numbers next week and say, "Wow, well, if you start, if you start this on the 7th and then you're waiting two more weeks, you know, to possibly start academics, you know, we can talk about it. We can see what the numbers do." But I, I, I'm not sure. What do you guys think? What, do we need more information or we need to digest this?
I'm not sure that we need, I'm not sure that we need more information. I think we need to digest this.
I think we need to read this because we just got it.
Right, and.
That's, that's the, that's the problem. And if we start golf and, um, earlier, and then will that jeopardize the rest of the fall sports? I, I, I don't know what's in here to even make comments on that. We need to bring this back to the table.
Yeah, I.
Can we, can we do it next week with an open meeting?
Then we can, we can.
Attack an open on after the close?
Yes. Because this is important.
Oh, it's very important.
Yes, we had scheduled a closed next week for 5 o'clock approximately. We'd have to schedule then our open session after that. We need some time in closed for all the personnel issues, so we could tentatively set it for 7 o'clock. Ms. Lucido, you getting that?
And this would be the.
I got it.
Okay.
This would be the primary topic on that agenda. And then anything that we, any conclusions that we might be able to come to from looking at specific personnel concerns, we could also bring that to open for a decision.
We should have Mr. Singer here for this or that portion.
Maggie says yes.
Yes.
I like, I liked you better than Mr. Singer.
A second.
Put it on his calendar, please.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
When, when do we have an easy subject? I forget.
So that brings us to the end of these scheduled topics. I, I guess it, it's fair to say at this point, we, we need to say that we're confirming that we're still, October 19th is still the date. Are we backing off of that at all?
Let's just, again, make sure that we add, you know, per the metrics that we're following. Because again, we certainly want it to be in that moderate range.
Yeah, and I'll just reiterate what I said earlier too. Obviously the staffing concerns. And so, you know, I think we have to have some flexibility available to us. I, I, I'm hoping we can, we can be creative and, and, and figure out how we overcome some of those challenges. But I also need to be realistic in the program that we want to provide in a hybrid model. So.
So I think we need to give staff and administrators the, the one week to look through all of the detailed information, so the personnel plans, kind of matching up the, the teachers with the leave, along with the students who are going to be virtual and hybrid, and seeing if, if they can develop that staffing plan that works. Options are on the table, right? We're talking about the FCR, FF-CRA adjustment for, for educators who, who have students, that they, they could bring their students in four days a week and that would alleviate the FF-CRA for some group of our educators. We're not sure how many, but we would need to know that number. Potentially changing teachers at the elementary school or potentially increasing class size. Looking at all the, all the options, I guess, I guess we're saying are on the table in order to address the, the staffing concerns. And we have the one week for each one of the administrators to use their data and determine whether that staffing plan is doable or not. And we're still saying that October 19th is the target date, given the metrics that we follow up on next week as well. Are we all, do we have consensus on that from everyone?
Yeah, and I think definitely athletics is, is on the agenda. But if, if more is developed, you know, we, we got to keep talking it. We got to keep working it. So if we're, if it's a bigger agenda, then so be it. We need to do it.
Right.
And I'm going to lay odds that there's going to be an announcement at the state level.
I was going to say. I was going to say.
Tomorrow, Friday, because every time we have a meeting and we, we make plans, something comes out at the state level the next day.
Wouldn't it be nice, so nice, no more mask and I can wear lipstick again? Me and Marshall both, we can all wear our lipstick again?
Okay, so we're, we're all in agreement that that's the, the plan for the next week? And then we have the, we'll have the current tech groundbreaking next week. We'll go into closed, and then we'll have an open shortly after closed next week.
Yep.
All right, any other new or unfinished business that we want to address?
Thank you, everyone.
I know, that's what I was going to say again. People are continuing to put in, in just a lot of hours trying to, to make plans and to make it work. So, you know, we just really appreciate everyone's efforts.
And we cannot jeopardize all that hard work.
I, I know the teachers are frustrated. I know they're upset, you know, they're not, they're overworked. They're going 12, 14 hours a day, and it's, you know, it's a lot. It is a lot. You know, and everyone even here in this building is working so hard to try for us to get back just a little bit. Because number one priority is our kids. Our students are the priority in any school system. So, you know, I mean, I understand that the teachers are upset, you know, and they're taking on, you know, Board of Ed's taking a little bit of tongue lashing a little bit here and there. You know, but, you know, we, we're trying the best we can too with the guidelines we've been given. You know, and it's, I know, it's, I know it's not easy, but our priority has to be our kids.
It does, and I think the perception, you mentioned the teachers and the hours and the work. And, and I think also, and, and we've said it tonight, but I don't think people hear it. Yes, there's a lot of teachers that want to take leave, and, but it's not all about just the safety. A lot of it is about daycare. A big percentage of them are doing it because of that, which they have, like, like the attorney has said, they have every right to do it. And if we can come up with a way to accommodate them, we can get some more teachers back in the classroom.
Okay, so I will say at that point, we do need to go back into closed after, after this meeting. So, and, and I do want to, I do want to follow that up, but just, just one final statement of just thanking everybody. I mean, these are very, very trying times. They've, they've been going on seemingly endlessly. But there, there's so much work going on, and everybody is working so hard for the, for the benefit of our kids. And I just want to thank everyone for the, the tireless efforts that are, that are going in. So it's not going unnoticed, and we can't thank everyone enough. So we will follow up again next week, see where we stand, and thank you, everyone. And with that, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Move by Ms. Herbert.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Dr. Dorsey. All is in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.